So, good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. I want to welcome you all to our work session this evening. And first up, we have our discussion on affordable housing, which I think we are all excited to dig into. Not only do we have experts at the table, we have a lot of interested parties in the audience that people haven't seen in a long time, so we're glad you're here. We have received some comments on this item. They've been entered into the record. And before we get started, I just want to recognize our guests that are here today. We have Tom Fleetwood. If you haven't met him before, he is the Director of the Fairfax County Department of Housing and Community Development. There's Cynthia Bailey, who is our Deputy County Attorney for Fairfax County. And finally, Melissa Jonas, who is obviously our Planning Commissioner, but she's here in her role as the Vice Chair of the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority and the Co-Chair of the Fairfax County Affordable Housing Resource Panel. So, I'm going to turn it over to the Town Manager, who has been instrumental in helping me get this organized and people around the table on a very important topic. So, let's get started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As many of you have expressed over the past several months, you all have been very interested in the topic of affordable housing. And the targets and what is happening seems to be shifting, and there's a lot of communications issues associated with what we're trying to achieve, what we're doing, what we're not doing. So, we thought it would be valuable to come to you with a robust group to help educate, to help discuss, to help facilitate getting to consensus on policy directives for the staff to pursue. So, with that, as the Mayor indicated, we have several subject matter experts who are here to help facilitate that discussion. Earlier today, I sent, well, first of all, last week, I sent to you an email asking what your questions are, what your concerns are in relation to affordable housing. And I received responses from many of you. I today have supplied back to you a compiled list, kind of categorized, so they're not by individual council members, but they're categorized and put in there. And it kind of follows how this discussion will flow tonight. We're going to talk about the current state, which is always the most important thing to do. It's the most important information on a battlefield, it's the most important information in business. Where are you today? You need to have a good sense of where you are. We're going to talk about that. Then we're going to start to talk about where we are in terms of the county. What is the county doing for us? What's the county doing countywide? We're going to pivot that to future threats and opportunities that are out there, and what we're looking at in terms of development, what the county's looking at in terms of what they intend to do. And then ultimately, we're going to discuss policy options. What can happen? What can we do to help facilitate your goals on affordable housing? Now, with that in mind, what staff is hoping to achieve tonight, before I turn it over to our experts here, is, first off, when you read about affordable housing, when you see the data coming out of county, when you see the data coming out of other places, there isn't much, there isn't a policy consensus on what is affordable housing? What percentage of median income? What percentage of income should be devoted to housing? Those targets float depending on the statistical pools you look at. So, we're hoping to get a better understanding from your perspective, what you perceive to be that target that we should be looking at. And the second thing is, we hope to get a consensus on what policy options you want to see us pursuing moving forward, so that we can take it back, take it to staff level, start crunching some rough order of magnitude, put some cost to these policy options, and come back to you, hopefully within a month or so, and brief you on those items. So, those are kind of what staff is hoping to get out of this discussion, and we hope that you help us get there tonight. I will now turn it over to Lisa Gillarin, who will talk about initially, what is the current state of affordable housing?
Thank you, Bill. As Bill mentioned, it's a three-part presentation. I'll begin it with talking about what type of housing we have in front of today, some of the particulars about our housing, how we compare it to the county at large in some cases. And then I will hand it over to Tom, and he will present about the county's programs and get into detail about affordable housing, what it is. And then it will come back to me to talk about the role, Herndon's role in affordable housing. Housing in Herndon. Most of this presentation, I'm going to be using figures that come from Fairfax County. They're from the Department of Management and Budget, and they're the 2018 numbers. That's the last full year, of course, where we have data from. And on this particular chart, I would like to point out two particular categories. The number of dwellings, 7,934 dwellings in Herndon at the end of 2018. And that will differ slightly from some of the data you've had in the past. The county numbers and our numbers differ by minor amounts, but just wanted to be aware of that, in case anybody had it memorized and they're looking at it saying, "That's not good."
September 15th of last year.
And the Fairfax County total, which is 418,250. So, if we look at how that compares, it shows that we're about 1.9% of the county's housing today. Now, if you look at density, because of course we are a town, we do have higher density. It makes sense that we would as a town, but as you can see, that is fairly significant, almost double. So, on the next slide, this is by unit type, how we compare to the county by unit type, and how our units compare to each other. Detached, single-family detached dwelling units. Herndon has 3,049 compared to Fairfax County's, which is 195,738. So, we're about 1.6% of the county's single-family detached housing. You look at the attached, we're coming in at about 2.4% of the overall. And then for multifamily, we're at about 2.1%. And as I said, that adds up to about 1.9% of the total. This is an interesting slide, because it speaks to our housing growth over time. And it may come as a surprise to some, that our most significant period of growth was in, actually was in the 70s. You look at that, 3,261 units were built during the 70s. And that's townhouses and single-family attached, as well as apartments as well. And when you add that to what happened here in the 1980s, at 19.3%, that's well over half of our dwelling units are 30, 40 years old, and in some cases, older. There's also, during the 70s, and also into the 90s, there's a certain, how to say it, the housing quality during that period, it wasn't perhaps as robust as it could have been, slightly lax in the building standards from that time. So, some of those buildings have a few more problems than some of the later, even earlier construction. In addition, you have to remember that in that time period, Herndon was the far western suburbs. So, this is where people were coming to find more affordable housing, market rate, but still more affordable. So, some of the units are a little smaller than maybe some houses further in during that period. And again, sometimes the construction wasn't as robust. Going to the 2018 sales prices, and I would like to thank Dennis Holstein, our Economic Development Manager, for working with Dennis Drinkard and Josh Furka to obtain these numbers for me. This is interesting, it's interesting in both what the average selling price was when compared to Fairfax County and Ruston. As you can see, for the condos, Herndon, the average sale price was 235,000. For Fairfax County, it was 293,000. And for Ruston, 323,000. So, you're seeing that we're coming in at 90 or so thousand for the average price from Ruston, a little closer to Fairfax County's. Now, of course, we're smaller, so we have fewer sales. So, the impact of an individual sale or cluster of sales has more impact on our average sales price. For the attached average sales price, Herndon actually is showing to be the highest at 411,000. But if you look at the median price, it was really about 371,250. And what happened there is we had several of the Junction Square townhouses sell that year, and they were selling at a much higher cost, a much higher sales price than the other townhouses within Herndon. And then for the detached, again, we are coming in lower on average than Fairfax County or Ruston, and the 500s versus the 700s for the other jurisdictions. This graphic shows you the percent of multifamily housing units by census block. And as you can see, Herndon being up here, outlined in the black outline, we sit within one of the clusters. You've got Ruston over here, that has a fairly high percentage of multifamily. You currently have a growing cluster of multifamily to the south of us along Centerville Road, and that's going to be filling out more immediately to the south of us as Woodland Park comes online. There's some housing there now, but multifamily housing there now, but that's going to continue to increase. And as you can see, the town itself has some areas where we're up to 60 to 79% multifamily down in the World Gate area primarily. And if you blow up that portion of the town a bit, you can then see, we've got the World Gate area coming in at 60 to 79%. We have a little cluster along South Eldon Street again, and then in other areas where more in the 20 to 39% or so. Rental inventory, a couple of things stand out on this slide. One, we actually do have a significant number of rental units, these are apartment complexes in the town, at 1,750 units. But another significant piece of information is look at the age of those units. You've got three of them coming in from the 1960s, you've got four from the 1970s, and that's seven out of 10 are 40 years old. And the next slide, the next slide, this is a breakdown of the rents for all the various rental developments within the town at this time. And I want to thank Corey Laws on our staff for going out and collecting this data last week for us. So, this is up to date. And I highlighted Herndon Harbor House, because Herndon Harbor House is, of course, a Fairfax County redevelopment and housing development. And so, that one, you could look at as subsidized, and so, they're coming in, in some cases, below $1,000 per unit. And the top range is just over, really, just over $1,000. The remainder of the units are going for 1,500 and above, for the most part. And that completes just the overview of where we are today when it comes to Herndon housing. And I will end there and hand it over to Tom.
So, good evening, again. I'm Tom Fleetwood. I'm the Director of the Fairfax County Department of Housing and Community Development, and very pleased to be here to help provide sort of a countywide perspective on what we're working on with respect to affordable housing. So, perhaps first, a little bit of perspective might be helpful. Fairfax County is an expensive place to live for a lot of reasons, but mainly it's because people want to be here. We have economic opportunity, we have outstanding schools, and we have an outstanding quality of life. Now, what is affordable housing? What does that mean? Well, it means a lot of things, but generally speaking, it means that housing that is price appropriate for a family. And generally, what that means is that you're not paying more than about a third of your income. Now, from a definitional standpoint, in the county, we generally use affordable and workforce housing kind of interchangeably. In our comprehensive plan, affordable and workforce housing go up to 120% of the area median income. So, just for perspective, that's about $125,000 per year for a family of four. But it's important to note that many families, especially seniors, people with disabilities, and others with high barriers, end up being cost burdened by their housing, often paying more than half of their incomes for rent. So, why is this important? Why is housing affordability such an issue for the families and the people that we serve? Affordable housing is really, a stable, affordable home is foundational for family success and stability. Educational and health outcomes are far better for people in homes that they can afford that are stable. And it's also critically important for community and personal economic competitiveness. Again, if the community is able to provide sufficient affordable housing for its workforce, it's more likely to attract and retain economic development opportunities. So, what does the challenge look like right now? In Fairfax County, we have a gap of about 31,000 affordable rental homes for families earning roughly 80% of the median income and below. So, that 31,000 is made up of folks who can't afford the housing that they're living in, or who don't have it, or who can't access currently an affordable home. Looking forward, there's a need for a net increase, net 15,000 new affordable homes over the next 15 years, serving households earning 60% of the area median income. And all of this is to say that, is that Fairfax County, to be successful, needs a healthy housing market that serves everyone.
Tom, can I ask, what's the difference between 15,000 and 31,000? I'm not clear on that one.
60% AMI versus 80% AMI.
And 31,000 also is present, and 15,000 is prospective.
So, currently, there's a 31,000 unit gap?
Yeah. And then looking forward, we have 15,000 more.
Is that additional?
Right. Because these came from slightly different data sources, and they're kind of taking different cuts, it's not exactly apples and oranges.
That's the current need, and that's the future?
That's correct.
That's the future additional need, right?
Right, correct. So, the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority is the preeminent provider of affordable housing in Fairfax County. And as the Director of the Department of Housing, I also served in effect as the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. The FCRHA, of which Commissioner Jonas serves as Vice Chair, is legally a separate political subdivision of Commonwealth of Virginia, with powers that are distinct and separate from the powers of the Board of Supervisors. And just to kind of give you a little bit of an example, the Housing Authority can own and operate residential housing, it can make loans to individuals and organizations, and it can also issue debt in the form of revenue bonds to support affordable housing projects. All of that is to say is that the Housing Authority serves as the county's local housing finance agency, or a housing provider. And, you know, we have a variety of programs that serve an extremely low-income population throughout the county. Some of those programs include the Former Public Housing Program, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, formerly known as Section 8, the Fairfax County Rental Program, of which Herndon Harbor House is a part, and our Local Rent Subsidy Program, the Richmond Affordability Program. On any given night, some 20,000 people roughly are sleeping in housing that is either owned and operated by the Housing Authority or is subsidized by the Housing Authority. And that doesn't count the tremendous work that our nonprofit and for-profit affordable housing development partners do day in and day out in our community, including we're joined by Mike Schoyer from Cornerstones, who is here as well, is one of our most important What I will say about our programs is the average income that we serve in Housing Choice Voucher, et cetera, is about $24,000 a year. So, if you kind of think about what that means for a family living in Fairfax County, but for these programs, but for the work of the Housing Authority and our partners that would be able to live here. So, about 35% of all the households who are living in Fairfax and FCRHA programs include at least one person with a disability. So, we are also the preeminent provider of housing for people with disabilities in our community. And then finally, with the most recent numbers, we are also the main resource of permanent housing for people coming out of the homelessness system. So, after the shelter, what happens to them? Well, they come, a lot of them come to housing that we provide. Fairfax County is, I'm very pleased to report, is embarking on what I think can, without hyperbole, be described as a new era of investment in affordable housing, both in terms of short-term new investments that we're making, and longer-term financial and policy investments that we will be making in the coming years. Commissioner Jonas co-chaired our Affordable Housing Resources Panel, which was really convened by the Board of Supervisors to develop a set of recommendations about, well, given this huge need we have, what kind of goals can we set? What kind of resources can we devote to this? And then finally, you know, what other tools can we bring to bear to, you know, to help us achieve our goals? So, the five major strategic areas they focused on was a new production goal in the resources, land use policies and regulations to help us achieve those goals, the preservation of existing affordable units, the institutional capacity of the county to be able to facilitate this kind of development, and then community awareness and legislative priorities, just to kind of give you a flavor of the sort of general areas that we focused on. And here are some of the headlines. So, the Board of Supervisors, based on the work of the Resources Panel, endorsed a goal of producing at least 5,000 new affordable housing units over the next 15 years, affordable for families earning 60% of the area median income. And that 5,000 unit recommendation is a floor, not a ceiling. So, this is the minimum of what we need to accomplish, and then we need to go from there. So, in order to get there, what has been recommended, and the recommendation that was included within the Board's budget guidance for the upcoming fiscal year, was to add the equivalent of one penny on the real estate tax rate for new affordable housing production. So, in Fairfax County, currently, that equates to about $25.5 million. This would be on top of the existing half penny that we already have, which largely gets to affordable housing preservation. Next, we also focused on a variety of land use issues that our new Deputy County Executive is going to be heading up. And, you know, there's really range from everything, from parking requirements to development fees, and, you know, a lot of issues in between, to try and help make these developments, you know, cheaper and faster to get, you know, to get delivered. Next, the Board reaffirmed its commitment that there should be no net loss, or no loss of existing affordable housing. So, in redevelopments, we have, you know, we have a number of areas that are going to go through likely profound change in the coming decades, such as the Richmond Highway Corridor, Bailey's Crossroads, et cetera, where this principle of no net loss of affordable housing is going to be very important. Institutional capacity, I'm pleased to report, the Board of Supervisors has already invested additional resources from the Department of Housing to facilitate additional development, with more on the way, including most particularly, a new position that is really focused entirely on helping our developments navigate the regulatory process in the county. Community awareness, and I'd just like to highlight this, I think everyone's aware that the County Executive is leading a countywide strategic planning effort. And one of the recommendations was to include housing affordability as a central tenet of that plan, and the work that's been done so far is bearing that out. I was just at the Board's Legislative Committee meeting this morning to Bullet Number Two, and affordable housing was front and center in that discussion, and I think is going to be a priority as part of the Board's legislative program. And certainly, community awareness and accountability for our activities relative to housing production, to make sure that everyone who is so invested in this issue, you know, is able to understand how we're investing the resources, and understand how we're doing relative to our goals. With respect to our work at the town of Herndon, there are three, you know, kind of principal areas that I'm really very proud of, that really underpin our work with the town, in terms of the services the Housing Authority provides. Number one is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We operate the voucher program here in the town of Herndon, as well as in the other incorporated towns within Fairfax County, and for the city of Fairfax, and the city of Falls Church, I'm aware of. We operate the Home Repair for the Elderly Program, which is one of our most beloved programs, I think, that provides $500 in materials and one week of labor for minor repairs that help our seniors and people with disabilities stay safely in their homes. This can be anything from replacing light fixtures, to grab bars, to, you know, panic buttons, those sorts of things. We also do-
Did you say $500?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the idea with that program is to address the small things that become big issues for people in terms of them being able to stay in their homes. So, these are like non-permit required repairs. So, again, grab bars would be one example of something we would do, and exterior ramp on a house would be something we could not do with that program. And of course, affordable housing development, the most, you know, we are, we continue to be very proud of Herndon Harbor House, and it is well-loved and one of the most important resources for affordable housing, certainly in the town, and in the county in terms of affordable senior housing. In addition, and something that we are very proud of, that we had for a long time, thanks to Commissioner Jonas's leadership, we were able to restore, was dedicated funding for the Housing Rehabilitation Specialist Position in the town. And we'll talk a little bit about that. So, the position is called the Housing and Neighborhood Improvement Coordinator, and the purpose is really to help make sure that single-family neighborhoods are sustainable, and that people are able to maintain their homes, and have them continue to be successful relative to homeownership. So, the position works directly with homeowners, and I know we're joined here by-
Mr. Laws, there he is, back there.
Mr. Laws, thank you. So, he's doing a great job with this resource, so thank, so we're very pleased about that. Just a little bit of, a little bit more information, FY 2019, a total of six cases were completed, and you can kind of see some examples of some of the work that has been done. and you can kind of see some examples of some of the work that has been done. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is, again, is the federal rental subsidy program that the housing authority operates. For those of you that aren't familiar, participants pay up to 35% of their adjusted income towards rent, and then the voucher pays the rest up to an approved amount. The town of Herndon itself, the incorporated town, has 112 voucher participants, and there are an additional 176 participants in the greater Herndon area. And just kind of for perspective, the 112 vouchers, voucher participants here in the town constitute about 3% of the total of the population in that program. So, you know, and I understand the town's population is approximately 2% of the county's overall population. The Home Repair for the Elderly Program, I described that a little bit earlier. We were able to do, we completed one case here in the town out of a total of 139. I think everybody here is familiar with Herndon Harbor House, continues to be a great resource for affordable housing here. This is one that perhaps you're not familiar with, and it's not, it's not within the incorporated town of Herndon, but it's just outside, and this is the Arrow Brook Development, and this will deliver a total of 274 new affordable housing units, serving households earning 60% of the area median income and below. The housing authority is providing a loan of $7.7 million in financing to help as part of the overall budget for the project. We're also providing some additional rental subsidies to serve people with disabilities, and we expect that that project will close its financing this summer of 2020 and get In terms of our inclusionary zoning policies, we have both the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program, which is provided for within our zoning ordinance, it's an obligation, and we have a proffer-driven incentive system within our comprehensive plan, which is our workforce dwelling unit program. In terms of the affordable dwelling units, we've had a total of 2,800 produced since the inception of the program in 1990. There are 188 rental ADUs in unincorporated Herndon and nearby in Reston. They're examples of some of the projects in which we have ADUs. Just so you know, ADUs serve incomes of 50% of the area median income and 70% of the median income, just for perspective. The workforce dwelling policy, dwelling unit policy, again, is enshrined within our comprehensive plan, and is a proffer-driven system by which developers receive up to a one-for-one bonus market unit for affordable unit. A total of almost 1,500, 1,500 units have been produced, almost all of which have been rentals to workforce housing units. There are a total of 471 of them in unincorporated Herndon and Reston. Here are some of the projects. It is important to understand, though, with the workforce dwelling unit program, that those units serve households earning 70, 80, and 120, pardon me, 80, 100, and 120% of the area median income. So it does serve a significantly higher income than our other programs serve. I want to thank you for your patience with the long presentation. I'll be very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Certainly, thank you. A lot of numbers in that.
Do we, just because we got to go back?
We have one more.
Lisa's looking back, and we're going to talk about some county specific questions.
Sure, let's get it all out there, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Can you, do you know the slide numbers? Can you get the right button and jump this slide?
Yeah.
Should be able to go to, get slide number.
Now that you've heard all about the different percentages of AMI, I thought we might take a quick look at the apartment units that we currently have in the town and how they fall in those levels. And as you can see here, we're showing the various levels for studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom, 60% being A, and then B coming in at 70%, 80% D, or C, I'm sorry, and D is 83%. Now, we don't have any studio apartments in town. We only have one in two bedrooms that I could match up here. We do have some three-bedroom apartments, but I did not have the data to look at those. So let's look, I didn't include Herndon Harbor House because we already know that that has special rents. So if we look at the various market rate rents in town, what we find is that the Burke Dale Apartments for one-bedroom and two-bedroom, they're coming in basically in the B category, which is the 70% AMI. Dulles Glen, you're looking at a B or C, it's very close to the edge, you know, going from one to the other. So there, you're looking at the 70% to 80% AMI. International Apartments, you're definitely in the C, which is the 80%. Park Avenue, Park Avenue Square Apartments, if you know where those, Park Avenue Apartments, if you know where those are, up on, along Park Avenue, across from Branch, they're the only ones that the current rents are hitting that A category of course, which is 60% to 70% AMI. And then you get into the Park Ridge Garden Apartments, they're running the B for the one-bedroom, C for two-bedroom, Stortwoods, one and two, they're in the C category. Towns at Herndon Center, those are the townhouses, the rental townhouses, and they're coming in at the C or D, and you'd expect those to be a little bit higher. And then the Westerly of World Gate, which are some of our newer units, those are coming in in the B/C category for the one-bedroom and the C for the two-bedroom. So that shows you that the existing housing stock, apartment rental stock in Herndon falls not in what you would consider the true affordable units, where you're getting down below 60%, but they're falling within that range of workforce units, and in some cases, towards the lower end of that range. So, and I'd also like you to pay particular attention to the Park Avenue, and remember that name as we go on. Now, we're anticipating future growth in multifamily in the town. We have several planning, small area plan, planning areas, one of which you passed earlier this year into the comprehensive plan, and that's the South Eldon, South Eldon Street Plan. That plan introduces horizontal mixed use into the South Eldon Street area, which means residential above commercial. It is, once it's built at some point in the future, going to be primarily multifamily housing. We've got one property in there, and they're looking at doing two-over-two product as well as traditional townhouse all on the same site. But the others, you can expect to be coming in at a multifamily type of development. And when you wrote that, when we wrote that policy, you adopted that policy, we do have language in there that tries to protect the existing multifamily housing stock that is there today. Burke Dale, we actually placed in the plan that we do not, I'll say, seek to have that changed, and with the density that we provided to the other development, it's not really an incentive to tear that down and redevelop it. So there was actually intended preservation of what's there today, and there's even mention of that in the language of the comp plan for the South Eldon Street Plan. Now for downtown, downtown, you're looking at the potential, and again, we're talking potential here. I mean, in South Eldon, there's a potential for 800 more units. We don't know if it's going to be 800 when you start looking at heights, when you start looking at lot configuration. This is just looking at purely from crunching the density numbers. So looking at the floor-area ratio and crunching the density. So it may be 800, it may be below 800. But that could pick up 800 multifamily units potentially. Downtown, including comm stock, you might see up to 700 additional units in the downtown area, and then...
So at least are those other 400, we're talking like pines, and across the screen, redeveloped down the way?
Yeah, C, and that would assume that you had the majority of that going to multifamily. It could be that C, instead of going to multifamily, could go to townhouse. Again, that's why we stress the potential.
I was just making sure we understood what we're calling downtown.
Yeah, this is the upper limits for if all those areas go. Yes, the darkening.
Thank you. Now, of course, H-Toc, the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, there we're looking at much larger buildings. You saw the Penzance 555 Herndon Parkway Plan, that went through you, and you saw that there we're really looking at, we're looking at steel-concrete construction, up to 20, 20-plus floors, and in that area, those parcels that are in the H-Toc area, there we could be picking up the potential for 3,500 additional units of multifamily. We were a little surprised when one of those parcels decided to leave a whole lot of density on the table and go with the two-over-twos that have been developed out there. We don't expect to be seeing that on those other parcels. At Fairbrook, we currently have a special exception in to allow multi, to allow mixed-use development on the Fairbrook property. That's the property that's immediately abutting the H-Toc on the same side of the Herndon Parkway. Currently, there's one small office building there. The proposal they have in, in addition to office square footage, is 900 multifamily units, up to 900 units. So there you, again, you have some. And then the TRG, Transit Related Growth Area, that's the area just north of the H-Toc. We started rolling out some planning work on that. We picked up the South Eldon Area Plan instead. We're now pivoting back to the TRG. We're waiting to get some additional traffic analysis to come in. So that's still to be determined, but you can assume that we're going to get additional multifamily. We just don't know at this point how much that will be. There's also some other information on the slide I want to point out to you, and that is that under the different planned areas, there's reference to transit corridor versus mass transit. And the reason for that is that the South Eldon Area Plan and the downtown, they are located along Eldon Street. Eldon Street is a very important corridor for the Fairfax bus service, Fairfax Connector Service, and actually, one of the routes that we have in town is, I think, the second most heavily used within the entire system.
Fifty?
Yes, probably. What that means is, we have a lot of people today, and we will have a lot of people in the future who rely on that bus service to get to their jobs, to get to their local stores, to pick up their groceries. And when you think about it, lower-income households often don't have, either don't have a vehicle of their own, a private vehicle, or they may have just one. And they are frequently the users of bus transit. It's less expensive, it tends to be more limited trips, not going further distances. The other three areas that we have on there, small area plans, your H-Toc, your Fairbrook, and in the future, your TRG, that's mass transit. That's being designed for fixed rail service, your metro rail. That's usually used by people who are going longer distance. I have no doubt you've probably heard and read in many post articles and various other places that metro rail can be very expensive for people. So it's usually not as, I would say, the percentage of lower-income households using metro rail consistently is lower than you would see on bus service. So I think that's something important to think about as we're planning in the future, you know? What is really providing the service? Where are those services being located? In addition, we continue to see resistance from developers and residents because of the market to what I would call service-oriented retail in your H-Toc, your Fairbrook, and potentially in TRG. And what that means is, you're not likely to see a grocery store. If you do, it would create a smaller one, you know, the niche type of store. So here, again, it's interesting, you look at your transit quarter, that's where you get your grocery stores. That's where you go to Safeway. That's where you have the various markets that we have out there today. That's where you're getting sprouts. That's where you have malls. So it's more along that transit quarter versus the mass transit areas where we're going to be seeing those basic services being expanded. Now, if you go on to the next information, our existing housing stock, preserving housing and protecting the current residents. And what are we doing today to do that? Because those are important features of having a healthy community. I think one of the town council members mentioned something in their comments, you know, regarding about retaining the value residents we have today and the diversity we have in the neighborhoods today. And that's what this is focused on, that protecting and preserving of current housing stock and residents. As we've mentioned, Tom mentioned, we have the Housing and Neighborhood Improvement Coordinator now through money that we've obtained from Fairfax County, and the position is, has been focused, it's really just starting up this past year, it's been the first year, it's really focused on the renovation projects to help people stay in their homes, people who might not otherwise be able to retain their housing and stay in their homes, to be able to allow them to do that, to stay part of our community. And to keep that housing stock that is more on the affordable end, to keep it in good condition so that it lasts longer into the future. Some of, some of the projects that were mentioned regarding this position probably sounded somewhat insignificant, such as fixing the toilet. One of them was fixing the toilet. Well, that was in a multi, at least the one I'm thinking of, was in a multifamily structure. That toilet had been leaking for quite a while. It was leaking into the unit below it. That means it was also leaking into the ceiling structure. And when the poor tenant, or the poor condo owner, I suppose it was, in the unit below would go into their bathroom, pieces of ceiling were falling on them, and they could not get the upstairs owner to fix that. Our staff corps was able to go in, explain to the owner of the problem toilet, you know, what this impact was, and assist that person in getting this fixed, not only improving that person's unit, but preserving the structure itself and definitely... that person's unit, but preserving the structure itself and definitely, definitely improving the quality of life of the person who lived below. So, it may sound small, but it can have a, a significant impact on the structure and on the people involved. So, that's what we're really looking at, reinvestment into that lower level of income housing. Now, the comprehensive plan, currently, the language in the comprehensive plan reads, "To encourage policies that maintain and encourage a balanced and diverse housing stock, tight, lot-size, cost-in-ten." So, there is acknowledgement in the comprehensive plan today regarding, uh, preserving the, uh, the housing stock that we have out there. And as I mentioned, the South Eldon Plan, which was added to the comprehensive plan, also strives to preserve, uh, some of the more affordable units that exist. Now, we do have some areas that staff looks at and says, "We've got some risk here." And these aren't the only two, but these are the two that first jumped to mind. And one is Park Avenue Square Apartments. You may remember, um, when we looked at those, those were the only ones that fell into that sixty percent, that A category of workforce. Those forty-four units built back in nineteen sixty-four are providing housing for, um, people in that lower income level. Back well over ten years ago, um, this is back, I think, probably around two thousand and six, I want to say, sometime there, uh, that was rezoned. Uh, that was rezoned to be the second phase of the Fort Knightly Development Core, uh, relatively upscale condominiums and townhouses. That rezoning never happened because by the time they were getting ready to go through the final steps of site plan, et cetera, we had the recession there. But the rezoning's sitting out there, um, and anybody can take advantage of it at any time, if they can get the hold of the property by a, from the current property owner, um, they can come in for a site plan. So, um, those particular units are definitely at risk. Shandon, um, there are two properties developments called Shandon. There's, uh, Courts of Shandon, they have an HOA, um, strong HOA, it has covenants, of course. But then, there are several blocks off Alabama Drive of just Shandon, not Courts of Shandon. Those are single-family detached homes, built, I want to say, in the early seventies, somewhere in the seventies, um, for single-family homes in this immediate area, relatively affordable. Um, and they are very close to the future metro station. Now, I happen to look at a few sales along Missouri Avenue in Shandon, and, uh, three homes had sold within the past year or so. And they're selling to real estate companies. What that's indicating to me is, you're looking at investors, they know the metro's coming, and, um, they may be thinking of in the future, scrape and build something larger, something fancier due to the influence of the metro, or accent of the metro. Now, that part of Shandon does not have a homeowners' association, they do not have the covenants, so, um, you know, being able to go in there, purchase those, it's easy. You don't have to worry about going through an HOA process. So, those are two areas that we believe could very well be at risk. Okay, so, we do have, has been mentioned several times this evening because everybody's favorite. We do have Herndon Harbor House, hundred and twenty units, um, Fairfax County Redevelopment Housing Authority. And, um, that continues to fill, yes, it's been here for a while now, it was built in the nineties, but it continues to be an exceptional, sort of, resource for our community. Um, and it's, it's really serving our town residents and, and providing at least one hundred and twenty of them with safe and affordable housing in their later years. Tom was describing what's going on around us that Fairfax County's been working on. And, um, so, what's been going around, and when I, these three, they are literally right over the bridge, either Monroe Street Bridge or, uh, the toll road bridge at Centralville Road. And that's Airbrook, Monroe Place, and Van Beeter. So, those are very close to us, not in town, but Herndon addresses. And, and in addition to that, when, one of the things you look at when you're looking at four-to-one workforce housing is the economic impact that it has on the community. Because of the fact that people who work in the area, you want them living in the area, it benefits them, it benefits the companies, because if people could live in the area, they're interested in those positions. And, um, and environmental, you know, from a planning standpoint, it's fewer vehicle trips, but at short distances. So, all of those are good things, and the fact is that, um, there's good reason to believe that some, if not a good number, good jury, of residents in these particular buildings will in fact be working within Herndon, because we are an employment center still. We do have a lot of office, we have a lot of retail, we have a lot of service jobs. So, that is something to think about. We've been over this already, there's some overlap here. Again, the Housing Choice voucher program, a hundred and twelve are being used within the town. Cornerstone, which not only runs our, the Neighborhood Resource Center here in town, but they own twenty-seven units. And, um, those units are really helping people in those lower tiers of, uh, the median income. And out of the twenty-seven, eighty-five percent, twenty-three households are the thirty percent area median income, and fourteen percent or households is fifty percent. So, that's below the workforce level. That's the, the true affordable level. Okay, so, possible paths forward. One of which would be to expand and intensify the protection and preservation of existing units out there, workforce and affordable units that are out there in Herndon. This would be to protect the current and future lower-income residents, preserve lower and moderate income housing, preserve older neighborhoods while protecting internal neighborhood Now, some of the methods there would be, one, funding sources to enable a greater number and more significant repairs and modifications to existing homes. Funding, it's, it's not only just finding the money, uh, but it, it's also about how you partner, uh, be it with the county, be it with nonprofits, um, to, to be able to obtain the money and also, um, have the work done in a manner that works with the rules and regulations that must be met when you're dealing with government providing a service like that. So, um, one is getting the money in with, and two is the process involved, working out the details of that process. And that's a challenge. The other is to develop resources to assist homeowners to appropriately modify their homes when modification is needed. Let's say you've got a somewhat affordable dwelling unit, but the family who is one of our residents, somebody who has, you know, family that's been living in town, um, they, they need additional bedroom space, you know, maybe their kids have gotten older, maybe they've had a relative who's had to move in with them, um, and they need that additional space. Does it mean perhaps putting an addition on the house if they're going to be able to stay in that structure? Does it mean, uh, maybe putting a, a room down in the basement? Uh, there might, might need to be modifications made to, to the, to the basement to allow there to be a bedroom down there? And maybe you've got a, uh, somebody in our neighborhood who is elderly, and now they need a first-floor bedroom, so they need to do an extension. You know, how do you help that person, that family, stay in place? How do you help the lower-cost housing stock get renovated and not lose it to somebody who wants to build what they call a big mansion? How do you do those two things? Some places have looked to pattern books. And what they do is, they're, they're not multiple, multiple pages, but what they do is have an architect come in and come up with some, um, appropriate floor layout, floor plans for expanding actual house types in the community. Case in point, Shandon. Have someone actually come up with a pattern book that could show people, if you're going to add on to a first-floor bedroom, then this could be the footprint, this might be how it looks, this is an idea. So, it helps the person start to envision how they can make that house work for them. It also helps to guide people to make those changes in a manner that is sympathetic to the housing stock that is there, to continue to make the neighborhood whole together and look like a neighborhood. And so, that too is an important part. So, that would be one way. Another way is additional classes. Corey's putting together a class now, I think it's with, uh, cornerstone's, and, um, that's going to be on, you know, taking care of your home, home maintenance, but I'm sure there are additional classes that would be of good use, financial, other types that would help people stay in their homes, help lower-income people find housing or contain their housing. Another one is neighborhood identification and celebration of the neighborhood. Some of our older neighborhoods, they either have weak HOAs, they don't have HOAs, but to give them pride of place, to let people know, "This is my neighborhood," that there is, there, there's something there, that a fabric, why they would want to stay there, why they would want to take care of it. And, um, there are a lot of programs throughout the country where really, of course, there's time, there's money, there's staff involved in it, but, um, I can think of one, um, out in Seattle, for at one point, what they were doing is they were kind of having like flash parties, uh, in neighborhoods and showing up on a weekend and throwing together a quick party, literally, you know, without warning, but bringing in some giveaways, getting people to come out, and teaching them how to take care of their landscaping, planting a tree in the neighborhood that day, um, and just getting people kind of like, "Hey, you know, I can do that too, I got this free spade, I got this or that or the next thing." And kind of building that sense of community. Maybe it means helping one of the communities put up an identification sign, um, you know, there are different ways to do it, but to build that sense of neighborhood and community. Sense of rejuvenation as well comes with that. Provide, okay, this is, this gets a little tricky. One is to identify those existing threatened resources and work with Fairfax County and others to save and expand on that. You know, year, when we're looking at that, first off, you have to, if it's privately owned, it's going to be, you have to have a willing seller, you have to have the funding. And you need it to be in the right place. It needs to make good planning sense. It needs to be in a location where the inhabitants of those units in the future can get groceries, they can get the bus service, um, and it, it really needs to, um, be thought out, um, from that standpoint as well. So, classic planning, classic land use, but also finding that funding and finding a way to purchase and need those units, to either rehabilitate them or renovate them or to tear it down and, and build additional units. Again, provide, another way is, as you've heard tonight, proppers. Several challenges with these. First off, you heard a little bit about the difference between workforce and proppers and affordable and proppers. There are two ways that it works. There's one, the units, where people proffer a particular number of units versus cash, having commercial property or residential property development for, uh, proffer cash to be used elsewhere for to actually provide the unit if, if it's a residential. To be able to do this, we need, would need to explore the ability to either partner with the county or to explore the requirements of creating our own housing authority in the town. Creating our own housing authority, of course, that's going to mean staffing, that's going to mean, um, working through the various details of the legalities of that. I'm not even certain, I don't think we're even certain at this point, all that would entail. Does it take a change to the charter? Does it take going down to Richmond? Now, the other thing is, if we were to go out on our own, our program would probably be very different than Fairfax County's because we would be falling under a different part of the state code. Fairfax County falls under one part, most jurisdictions in Virginia fall under a different part, so there might be that issue as well. And when I said staffing, um, there's not only the logistics of getting there if we go out on our own, but whether we're on our own or working with Fairfax County, there's the enforcement and oversight. If we cooperate and find out a way to actually work with the county and have the county administer these programs, then they could do the administrative work, um, but it would still more than likely fall on town staff to do the enforcement. And when we say enforcement, what we're talking about is, when you get units, those units are controlled by special rules and regulations so that they remain affordable. And let's say it's an apartment unit, it's rental, and it's in the affordable program. Someone could be renting that and then sublet it, or if it's a condo, they could purchase it and then sublet it, and it may no longer be affordable. They may in fact be, um, making that price, making a profit, mention that. And that's not what we want, that was not the intent, so you have to enforce it. And so, that's something to consider when you, when you're looking at the various things. It doesn't mean we can't do it, it just means it's a consideration. There are limitations- There are limitations regarding type of construction imposed by the Commonwealth. I think Tom knows more about this than I do, but when it comes to, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Tom, please. My understanding is that when it comes to actually having someone by zoning code, by requiring, you're going to require them to proffer a unit. There's only certain types of construction that that can be related to, that can be imposed. And I believe that is four-story?
Stick and mortar construction. But, you know, it's also, it's important to remember that it's not within the proffer system, it's requiring it under your zoning ordinance.
Oh, that's right.
It must be, you know, economically neutral. And that's why, you know, the ADU program in Fairfax County is structured the way it is, you know, to restrict it to certain construction types.
Does economically mean something?
I'm going to refer to my distinguished counsel.
Thank you all. It essentially means that you can impose an actual cost on the developer to build the affordable housing. So in the county, for example, under our affordable dwelling unit ordinance, we provide a developer with greater density, and then that density essentially subsidizes the additional costs associated with his construction or her construction of those affordable units. So that's what it means by neutral. So the General Assembly was really clear. They didn't want the responsibility of building affordable housing to fall on the development community. Developers partners, meaning that they will work with the county to build affordable housing as part of their developments, but again, when you have that exchange of density, it means that it costs neutral to them. And there's a, the way of quantifying the density that you can offset the building.
So the reason in the county that we opted to have sort of stick and mortar construction as the only types of construction units is that anything over four stories under the building code is a higher use group under the building code. So in other words, at that point, it becomes steel and concrete and fire systems get in place, and all of that construction, that construction type, is much more expensive. So expensive that it's unlikely, in an affordable regimen, that you can make it cost neutral as is required under the statutes.
Are you using the term affordable interchangeable with workforce dwelling units?
I'm trying not to.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do that, because I think her question is where I wanted to go with that. Is everything you just said applicable to workforce dwelling units? For the town perspective?
Well, and I can't, I can't speak to the town because I'm not entirely clear what the town's nomenclature is with respect to affordable versus workforce. I can speak to the county. So in the county, typically, I try to use the term affordable unit when I'm speaking about the affordable dwelling unit ordinance, and that is a zoning ordinance. In the county, our workforce units are those that are proffered.
Thank you.
Right? And so proffers are voluntary contributions that developers can make. Now, the laws around proffers have gotten a lot more stringent in the last couple of years. And the general.
Developers are pretty modest.
They've done a really good job. And so there's real constraints on the type and kind of proffers that are, that are not directly related to the impacts of a particular development, with the exception of areas that are designated as commercial revitalization areas or that are near mass transit, I think those are the two exceptions. But if it's just your standard, normal, normal residential construction or residential development, you have to look really carefully about the type and kind of proffers that you would ask a developer to contribute. And ask is truly a critical word, because if you start working in the realm of demand, you start running afoul of statutory authority.
Talk the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you for that, sure. Now, my next bullet here is the constraints inherent in the process. And there are quite a few constraints inherent in that process. And when the town has worked with proffers in the past, the town has been very careful to not actually state or tell, I'll say tell the developer what we want them to proffer, because that can be considered crossing the line. Now, that being said, we do tell them what the impacts are. We tell them what our traffic study has taught us. We tell them, you know, some of the other costs involved. We tell them what parks and recreations burdens might be. At this point, we're telling them, along with Fairfax County, what the schools burden of course be, those impacts. And then it's up to them to write the proffer and for us to determine whether or not it's meeting or related to those impacts.
So how does the flexibility that we have around the H-TOC, how does that come into play? I mean, you said that the proffer regulations are less stringent on H-TOC areas. What does that mean? I mean, I know you didn't use those words.
No, no, I understand. So again, the affordable dwelling unit, well, let's strike that. Yes, around, yeah, so you're right, I mean, under the.
Can we say, for example, metro, the people who are using metro are going to be young professionals, but young professionals need to make at least $7,000 a year to afford the, whatever it is. So affordable units for workforce would be beneficial in there.
So I need to be careful, because I'm not your lawyer, so I don't want to make you wrong.
I think the issue.
This is all. I'm going to jump in here, I think the issue is. Cindy is talking about proffers in Fairfax County. It would be, I think you're asking about proffers in Herndon. And even though it's on different sides of the, very close, on different sides of the toll road, they are very different. Fairfax County has a very highly-developed, very specific, supported by a lot of infrastructure, proffer policy. Herndon does not. And I was not here many years ago, but I think that is by choice. And then times changed, when Herndon began to change, and we became a more, less even suburban, more urban area, and proffers were not as easy to come by. And that is, I think, what Ms. Gillerint is facing her, you know, balancing constraints, her comments on is Herndon and what we look like. So it's definitely comparing apples and oranges at this point. But certainly, if you want to hear about what Fairfax County.
Well, so my question is, is that a regulatory thing or a habit thing? Because if it's a regulatory thing, I understand.
Now, it's a regulatory thing, it's not a habit.
Okay.
So let me, let me parse that a little bit more. So our proffer policy exists in our comprehensive plan. And remember, a comprehensive plan is just a guideline. So as a, as a, truly as a technical legal matter, it is not a regulation per se. I think that it was developed in concert with the development community to provide some certainty around what some of the hopes of the county would be with respect to certain types and kinds of development, so that there would be, you know, less motivation for there to be challenges. And again, when there's input from your development partners, you're in a better position to succeed in terms of developing the type and kind of policies that you want. But that, that policy for the creation of workforce units, and again, the workforce units under the comprehensive policy that the county has tend to be at a higher income range, so I think, Tom, help me out here, I think they're 80 and up?
Eighty, a hundred, and 120.
Yeah, eighty, a hundred, and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So those, but it was a, you know, sort of a concerted policy that was developed. And again, it's in our comprehensive plan, which is a guiding document.
As opposed to a zoning ordinance that requires a certain percentage number, et cetera?
Precisely.
So let me make sure I understand this correctly. So we do have many constraints, right? And limitations as to proffer what you can ask and what you cannot. But if I understand correctly, we have some twisting and tweaking we can do, right? I mean, we can always say, what are the issues over here? And once they offer that proffer, then we can negotiate based on what they offer, but we cannot directly, there are many limitations asking the developer community, we need this and we need that, we need this kind of vice versa.
Yes. I would say that that is generally correct. Now, that being the case, and let me get some clarification concerning Fairfax County. When they proffer workforce, do they get added density? Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what those calculations are.
Up to one to one.
Up to one to one, what does that mean? Well.
One unit for every workforce unit proffered.
Right. So.
So conceivably, if they say, we'll give you 20 workforce units, they can have 20 additional at-market units?
That's my requirement, yeah. It's up to a cer, up to a certain cap.
Gotcha.
And are the workforce units exempt from the stick and mortar thing? Is that what I understood?
Okay.
The reason it's exempt is that it is, is that it's a vol, is that it's a voluntary proffer as opposed to a statute or an ordinance to require that.
So in the H-TOC right now, that area's been technically rezoned so that a developer coming in knows that they can request a 3.8 to a 4.3 FAR. And when we did all the studies associated with the determination of that density, your traffic, your water, your sewer, all of those studies, that was the maximum that it was designed to at 4.3, at the R.
And if I could pause for a second too, as we look at those areas over there as well. To get to 4.3, we need commercial mix in there. We need other things than just residential on that site to activate, to activate the 4.8, 4.3 she was talking about.
So does that, oh, good. Does that leave us room to negotiate with them for more density? I'm not, I'm not grasping quite how we.
Well, I guess the best way to look at, at least my understanding of it, and I'm kind of, you know, being caught, you know, this evening to discuss this, I haven't done a lot of research. But I think if you look at it from a Pennsance standpoint, and I don't remember the exact number of units Pennsance was able to get with 4.3 FAR that they went to. But let's say you're looking at them doing affordable, well, workforce, we'll use the term workforce housing, and in addition to that, and you wanted 45 units. They would get an additional 45 units over and above what you already.
Give it to her.
Now, that being said, again, everything that went into the metro area plan to determine traffic flows, intersection operations, water and sewer capacity, all of that was based on the 4.3. And so by giving them those workforce units, you've just gone over and above what all of that background study showed to be the, basically, the maximum.
So in that case, you'd want to give less density to somebody going later? Is that how you manage the density?
Well.
So I think that, I can tell Cindy's been to every affordable housing meeting that the county has had in the past year. But I feel like we have one more that we've thrown out here, possible path forward. And then these are the kinds of questions I think that we need to ask staff to go and dig in, not tonight necessarily. So if I can move us to the next, to the next slide and then kind of give some direction to staff. Because I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but these are the questions we need to be grappling with.
Just to finish up with this one, this slide. So the other thing you have to look at is balancing it with the other needs, because proffers are not unlimited.
Aw.
I know.
This is.
You've got, I mean, you know, when we do get proffers, at this point, we're looking at infrastructure, we're looking at intersection improvements, we're looking at multi-modal improvements, we're looking at open space in the sense of, you know, a community that doesn't have some relief, you know, some open space. We're asking for high-quality materials so that it's durable, it will last. And we're also sustainable construction, we want to have sustainability built in. And it's also the competitive position of our H-TOC area compared to some of the others. The fact of the matter is, there's greenfield to the west of us that's less expensive to build on than redevelopment areas. And Herndon, although we're getting better, we still are in a struggle to compete head-to-head with, say, Reston. And our staff in CD deals with this all the time with developers still. We still hear, oh, well, I build that in Reston, but the numbers don't work for her. And that's something to be aware of. So, you know, these, it's balancing, it's not that you can't do it, it's that you have to, you have to balance that. And. Let's. So those of you who have been reading about affordable housing and workforce housing, you have been reading about, I have no doubt, accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units can be a separate unit within a house, or it can be a separate cottage or above a garage, a separate building on a lawn. Currently, the town allows that by special exception if one of the inhabitants is elderly or in some way has a disability where they need a caretaker. So by special exception, you can have an accessory dwelling unit in those circumstances. What, what the nation is really talking about, though, at this point, at least those areas of the nation that have an affordability issue, is allowing homeowners to have an accessory dwelling unit that they can rent to, you know.
Whoever, whatever.
To whoever. Now, there are a few challenges with that. One is, and actually, you're going to be looking at a zoning ordinance in the coming months concerning short-term rentals. Read that as Airbnb or one of these other services. Read that as Airbnb or one of these other services. The short-term rentals have really caused some problems with housing availability. So if you're drafting an accessory dwelling unit ordinance where you want to be allowing these units to help solve the affordable housing issue, then you need to take into account that somehow you need to draft that language so they don't just become Airbnb or short-term rental units. Now-
Or very expensive apartments people are making a lot of money on. In Minneapolis, it's been touted as no more single-family. I have a good friend that lives in Minneapolis, and she sends me all these articles. And it's not really solving the problem that was intended, it's a cash cow for a lot of people.
It can be. And now, in some cases, people say, well, if you let people rent out to short-term rentals, that it still helps them because the homeowner can stay in their house, it helps at the expense. But the fact of the matter is, that argument works when it's a long-term rental as well. And then you're helping two people. You're helping the person in the accessory dwelling unit and the property owner. Now, as for it being a cash cow, I don't quite know how you can get around that. The only thing you can do is limit size. And if you limit size, that may, you know, if they're very small units, that may make it less likely. The other thing is, if it's in a place like downtown Minneapolis or very close in, think about Arlington versus Herndon.
Sure.
If you have an accessory dwelling unit in Arlington, you're probably going to be able to get a really good rental. Out in Herndon, probably it won't be white, fat hot, it may be a little less. And if it's a particularly small unit, it may be affordable or at least affordable. So that's one. The other one-
Sorry, just, come here. Just so it's clear in my head, because I've heard different descriptions of this. So Grandma lives in Herndon, she lives in an older home, she's on a fixed income, but she decides to create this, this accessory dwelling, separate kitchen, separate door entry, it's a separate unit entirely. I don't see the drawback on that, if I technically stick to the-
That's already allowed.
Right.
Well, that's allowed if the person who's going to be living there is there to assist.
Well, yeah.
But what this would be, would-
Seems unnecessary.
Yes.
But what this would be, would, if you're looking at accessory dwelling units, no concern about age whatsoever. I mean, it could be a young family and they-
Subsidizes them.
Right, right, right. It allows them to stay in that house or buy that house, and then they're also providing some workforce housing on the same lawn.
I guess why wouldn't we allow that? Just the way it is now.
That's a whole other meaning.
Well, let's go down to the challenges, because that's some of the high-
Well, and I think the reason I brought up the statement that I brought up is that I think that there's a mindset, and I know in parts of Minneapolis it was, we're going to create these units that are going to be the affordable unit. And it may be helping the homeowner afford their unit or their home more, but it's not necessarily solving it in the way that they thought it was going to be solved.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. It's, in a way, it's like the Airbnb or short-term rental issue. I mean, you're not creating an affordable unit, you're just helping somebody.
It's not making a place for the families that we've been talking about, serving a place for them to live. But it is helping the current homeowner afford it more, which is also helpful, but what problem are we trying to solve here?
Right. And-
And we've also had the issue where we had one neighbor that had, someone had two sheds, and they weren't just sheds for your lawn equipment. They both had four different individuals living in each of those sheds. So that became a whole other issue.
Shedded breakfast.
They didn't have, they didn't have bathrooms in there, they were running extinguishing plants.
This is what happens when we've been sitting here for hours now.
Okay, okay, let's go to, let's go to some of the challenges here.
I'm sorry, we're getting a little punchy, sorry.
That's fine. We've got ownership and rental. We definitely, if you were to create such an ordinance, you would want to ensure that one of those units was being lived in by the owner of that property. You don't want somebody just creating two units and renting right now. Enforcement, you know, there's additional enforcement here, so people aren't living in sheds, which really wouldn't be an accessory dwelling. Parking, if you ask the town manager, all town governance revolves around parking.
Ninety percent of it.
Ninety percent of it. And so, you have to take that into account, you know, basic zoning, you know.
Sure.
Somebody's going to be living there, chances are, there's going to be another car. Right now, there's according to be two car spaces, so take care of that, figure it out, how best to do it. And then there's the general acceptance of this. For a long time, Herndon was very concerned about an excessive number of people living in neighborhoods. And because of cars and general issues related to that. So there, there has been out there this concern about losing the feel and the comfort people felt in their communities, be they single-family detached or townhouses. So that's, that's something to think about. I mean, as, if you draft an ordinance like this, there will be some people who will be concerned about, what will this do to my neighborhood? We're going to have strangers coming in and out all the time. My, you know, I don't, I've got little kids, I don't know who all these people are. I bought a single-family home, why are there two buildings, why are there two houses next to me? All of that. So those are some of the challenges. It doesn't mean they would block it out, you know, these are not, I'm not saying that these stop you from doing it, it's just things that you might have to think about if you decide to pursue that avenue. So that gets me to the next and final slide, and what policy mix is right for Herndon? Because it's probably going to be a mix. It's not going to just be one thing. It's probably going to be a mix. Focus, your goals, protect, preserve, provide, all three? Emphasis, below sixty AMI workforce? Missing middle, that's kind of that upper workforce, I think? Are you looking at fixing things with the people who rent or for the people who don't? So with that, I will-
And again, if I get the seats on that, that's one of the things that is concerning staffs, we want to fix a target. And if we can get a really, just to jump simple, what the problem is that we're trying to solve here, and what some of the policy tolerances are up there, it would certainly go a long way to help us craft something that would be acceptable.
Sheila? So one of the things that my interest is, is the no-net loss, that's a good term, whoever set that first. As we do the redevelopment along South Elton, I think that's very important, that we don't lose, and those happen to be rental units, they're not owned units. But if we lose things that are affordable to a large number of people that do our service jobs, or are going to fill those service jobs, and we're going to displace a lot of people. So that, and then as the metro develops, looking at having some of the housing there, because that's going to be huge. My first would be-
Yeah, right.
Because it's close to mass transit, keeping the cars off the road, you're more likely, we can't get a lot of folks out here because we don't have access to metro. I've talked to other businesses in the area, the building that's over by the Safeway, they do some government contracting. Well, most of the people that want those jobs use rail, so they, they've got to have that. But we're going to have to be answering that in the next year, so.
I can ask a question about that. Is it something specific you need us to try, try to look at in the H-Talk, or since we're molding the TRG out of clay, is that where you might have to start looking?
I think-
Since that's more of a, more closer to a greenfield for us from a planning perspective.
Maybe, maybe the council takes some time to have like a strategic vision, planning session. What is it that we really want to achieve? Because there's a lot here, there's a lot of different ways.
Well, that's why we were kind of chasing our tails, we wanted to present this to you, because there is so much.
Well, we, I'll apologize for not being clear in having a vision or making mine, because I didn't know, I didn't know enough.
Well, that's why we wanted education, too.
I think what all wraps this up to be, with the metro coming, Harvard University back in two thousand and six did a study specific to poverty, transportation in cities where, you know, you have suburban poverty, which is about eight-point-nine percent of the population, and cities have about nineteen. But if you look at centers of people who are low-income around, in New York, for example, in subway areas, they're two or three times more likely to get out of their situation because they have transportation means to get to a job and to be, to accelerate their incomes. So I do think that looking at the metro plan, even how buses are operating, can really help map our future and where we need to have workforce housing, things of those nature. So I think those are part and parcel, one and the same, so I do think we need to factor that. Does that make sense, please?
Yes. Okay. I have the study, if you ever want to see it.
Yes, very thorough presentation. Thank you for your research work and this presentation. A few things, definitely we can see we have seven thousand nine hundred thirty-four current dwellings, and in near future, TRZ is uncertain, but adding all those together, we're going to have more than six thousand more units in the near future. So that's almost double what we have right now. So based on metro coming and the judge and opportunities coming in here, how the pricing will be for those houses is very critical. Herndon is a little different than the Fairfax County altogether, I believe, because we have people making a lot of income, and we have people making very low income also here. So this average mean income, median income could be sometimes deceiving when it comes to Herndon. So how can we make sure the prices remain affordable for the people who cannot afford if the prices go up? And especially with these modern developments and everything, the prices will go up, and it will be very tempting for people to buy. And housing is always affordable, the question is to whom, right? So there are people who can afford six hundred, seven hundred, even a million-dollar house, but does that apply to everybody when it comes to Herndon? It does not. So I think, I agree with the council members, we need some more time to, to, to create more strategic vision on this one. And also, if we can get more information on, especially the proffers, what are in place right now, and if we compare, because we always compare with Fairfax County, right? So what are the basic differences we have versus Fairfax County in terms of affordable housing zoning? I mean, we don't even have that, right? And then the proffers and everything, that would be really helpful. Penny fund, twenty-five-point-five million a year, and obviously, Herndon residents also pay that tax, so how can we probably redirect some of this money in Herndon, or at least in the Gorden-Herndon area, so that it serves the people in this area, so we can use that money to incentivize more to create affordable units?
Mr. Paul, I'd like to take a moment for the county staff just to clarify that. Many of the programs that we highlighted, that, that funding comes from that penny fund? So we are, you are seeing a good amount of that, that fund come back, I would say, at an equitable level, frankly, which-
Right, I, a few things I might, I might just note, just as a general comment on that, is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about inclusionary zoning in proffered situations. And it's really important to recognize, at least as practiced, practiced in Fairfax County, that those are just, you know, those, those are, are individual tools within a much larger toolkit, number one, and that those programs tend to serve, you know, higher incomes than, you know, than are served in our other affordable housing programs. So in other words, they, you know, our inclusionary zoning policy has served, you know, sort of that middle income, that kind of missing middle, as opposed to people earning sixty percent of the area median income below. To Commissioner Genus' point, you know, what I, what I would say is that we've been, you know, we've been very successful in making investments with the penny fund throughout the county. And what I would say with respect to next steps in terms of investment in Herndon is that you need a project.
So I, I, we've been sitting here for a really long time, and I, I think that there, we've gotten a lot of information, and I think that we all would like to have a robust discussion about this. And I would like to propose that we either have it as a discussion in another meeting, or maybe we have just a special work session where we're just sitting around the table and tossing through these, these ideas. Because what I am grateful for is that we have a council that I believe is a hundred percent on board with exploring how we can do this better. That has not always been the case. And what has been happening is a lot of sidebar meetings and things, and we haven't all been looking at the same sheet of music, and now we are. And I think with our partners at the county and Corson, which is very well represented there, I think we've got a real opportunity to make some good things happen. I need to digest a lot of this myself. My things that I, just right off the top of my head, the things that jumped out at me were, before nineteen seventy, we had eight-hundred-and-ten dwellings in the town. That was not that long ago, you guys. You know, that, that helps me have some perspective about how, so we've had many of our residents who are really concerned about metro in particular. Because a lot of them lived here when there were eight-hundred-and-ten dwellings, so right off the bat, that jumped out at me as a perspective point. I would really like to figure out, and we can delve into this and other things later, but I want to figure out how to really work as efficiently and as well as we can with the county, because that's my, people ask me all the time, don't you wish you were a city? No, I don't wish we were a city, there are so many great resources, that even some of the cities are using them, you know, through some sort of agreement. So I would like to, like, parse through, do we, are there, are there things we just need to have staff connect on? Do we need some MOUs? Like, I don't know what we might need to do to maybe work some of those things better. I would love to figure out how we can better utilize Corey Law's position, which I can't remember your title, but the guy who helps everybody and preserves housing. But, and I think that we have a, we have some funding, and the issue may be, like, how do we have to get that funding where it needs to be? And, like, the toilet story, that was classic, why I love being, quote me on the newspaper this, that toilet story is why I love being mayor. Like, Fairfax County is so large, they can't possibly have a Corey that goes out and helps people every time they have a toilet issue and helps us. We can do that as a town. And I think that we can approach affordable housing in a macro level and at that micro level, where we can really make a difference for the people who are already here. So comp plan language, as we have it. We're doing that right now. So I, I think that this is timely, and I'm really glad that I'm a part of the council now who embraces this and thinks it's important. So, do we want to look soon-ish on, just really, and the agenda for that work session is, so, what do we think about all this stuff we just learned and talked about? Just figure out what's possible. Because I kind of want to do it all, but we do have to, like, figure out what makes sense.
Just, just to leave, we have a lot on tap for you this fall, going into winter, just seeing the stuff that's getting queued up that we're looking at for October and November and December. We'd have to have a separate meeting, completely distinct from-
I think that's what the mayor was, just want to make sure.
I mean, I don't like to, like, create meetings, but I think this is important, and I think we want to be fresh.
And this is, this is hard stuff, this is hard stuff.
Well, it's not a quick fix. I mean, we're not going to fix it this fall, but we're going to start a plan and figure out a roadmap for it.
How fast would you like to turn around? Because I want you to be able to digest what you've gotten this evening and ask questions, and we can prepare yourselves, so how fast do you want to turn around, so?
I'm going to let our distinguished guests make a break for it, because unless they're-
I can't speak at night, I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, just one sec then, before you go. Because I had some questions related to all those questions we asked, like, do we need those folks with all the, the list of questions that were submitted, that we want to walk through?
Those we tried to answer in the presentation, we just were hoping you'd just, just poke us.
Okay.
And we would go do our best to answer.
So I had maybe a super minor one then that I, I don't feel, I don't know that it was on that list, but, you know, I know it's, it's a question of rental versus own, and then as I look at our rental stock is twenty-two percent, oh, twenty-two percent of our town in Herndon stock. And I was just wondering, is that reflective of Fairfax County? And you may not know that stat off the top of your head, but I'm just wondering if, like, we have such a small percentage compared to Fairfax County overall, two percent, but then as I look at, it seems like rentals is, is going to be a big piece of this discussion.
But then as I look at, it seems like rentals is, is gonna be a big piece of this discussion. So I want to really understand the rental part. And I'm just saying, we have twenty-two percent of our housing stock as rentals. How does that compare to Fairfax County?
The short answer is I don't know.
Okay, so I would love to know. I just think that would be helpful. And again, I know we don't have to totally compare and be proportional, but it just gives us such a good frame of reference to have, to know what's happening in.
In the Skilburn's presentation.
Well, we'd have to do the math. The multifamily in Fairfax is one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred forty-one units.
Okay, so if I do, well, see, I didn't know if multifamily was the same thing as rentals. Because we have a separate number for rentals, so that's why.
It's not always, but.
Because I think it was like thirty-two percent or something.
Yeah, you could have some condos in there.
Okay.
So.
Right, so it's not quite the same. I just want to compare the same data. Okay.
I want to thank you so gratefully for being here. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, we do, but I want to circle back that I, I think that it's probably the turnaround time is gonna be more indicative on like, when does everybody have an extra night to have a meeting? And it's a scheduling thing.
And when you say wouldn't want the turnaround to be. My, my question is just the turnaround in terms of when we schedule this meeting?
Right, do you want this in two weeks, two months? Surely not two years. Which are towers?
Well, October first is a Tuesday. It doesn't have a date. It's October, it's on my birthday, so. October first. I actually thought it was a mistake until I looked at it. I remember why we did that, yeah. You said after VML, Phil? Like, that's only like another.
What I'm saying, because there'll be some stuff there, whatever.
You want to do it after VML? Because there'll be more stuff to discuss?
Well, I think there'll be some topics that will be, that's right. It'll be more of a group thing. It'll just make more sense.
Well, in a month will pass.
Look at the week of the.
Well, I don't think we can decide this right here, but it might be nice to have it after VML and before the roundtable, if possible. Because we're probably gonna get some questions about the roundtables. I don't know where that timeframe is, but.
Yes, the round.
And then I go again. It's the two.
And if that doesn't work, then we'll.
We will energize Vicki to be in touch.
Let's take, we still have our entire agenda ahead of us, so let's take a very quick bathroom break and come back. I don't know, Sheila, you're the time.
I don't have the time. We're on five minutes.
Five minutes.
All right.
Start good luck.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Here's the, I think, I'm gonna give a letter to be. What I would invite you to take that along and wait for us to hear and say, hey, like us to, if you have the time, we have whatever other conversation you have, so if you would like to. Just to sit in that room and be able to talk against your question, talk about possibilities.
All right.
So we just, we just finished item one of the.
It was one of those things, it was one of those things when we got into the, the work, when we got into the team to talk about this, we went, we should have moved this up to six. It was too late that. That's what we're, when I sit in management team last week, I'm looking at this and going, why did we move this?
No, this was great.
Well, and that's what we wanted to give you again, because all the questions you all had and we wanted to just, we wanted to give you a role process. We wanted to be experts in here. We wanted to be able to research it thoroughly ourselves and get a better handle on what's going on up there. So we had that conversation. So that's why. Lot of hit, lot of hit the mark and. I, I told my wife, you see me before. To the point of my, you told the chief, stay over at the station until about eight-thirty, I'll text you.
Me and Mandy had the chance to really sit down.
That's right. We're gonna plot that, you follow the storyline. And also I'm like. Yes. Expeditional, well, sometimes expedition brings nowhere. That's fine.
It's movies. It's what the movies like. There'd be some good things. All three of those. I got to meet him when you were having coffee.
Yeah, yeah. That was before you got to win the election.
Y'all were the ones that were gonna get together with this somewhere then.
It was weird.
Not one person in the movie hits what I would have called.
Somebody asked me the other day, can the guy?
Oh, no. You have your card?
I do not, but you know what?
I had to take plea on this. She did?
Yeah, we're gonna just very briefly.
I had her mail. All right. Welcome back, everybody. We're gonna pretend at seven PM because we're at the beginning of our agenda here. Next week we have, I'm just gonna keep talking. We have three, well, we have two proclamations and a certificate of congratulations for our presentations. Looking forward to those. Any questions or comments on this? All right. So public hearings. The next five ordinances relate to, the next five ordinances relate to transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. I've got a bunch of stuff I need to read off for the record here. These ordinance authorize the acquisition of a fee simple interest, permanent and temporary easements on the property owned by James Gallagher for public use by condemnation imminent domain for transportation facility improvements to the Van Buren Street. Project from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway, a temporary easement on the property owned by the Montessori Country School for public use by condemnation. These are very similar. I'm just gonna, I think going forward, I'm gonna just mention the properties. The next is a temporary and permanent easements on the property owned by President's Court Colonnors Association. A fee simple interest and temporary easement on the property owned by the silly, I don't know how to say that last name. But that would be the follow-up one. And the last one is a fee simple interest and temporary easement on property owned by Rosario Rivera for public use by condemnation imminent domain for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. And our count is currently these days.
My comments will be.
Tell us more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments will be very brief. You are now familiar with the power that localities have of imminent domain to conduct condemnation of properties to obtain interests for public use projects. Public use project here is the Van Buren Street improvement project. It's a longstanding CIP item. I think many of you sitting at the table in fact have, as recently as a couple of years ago, oh, maybe even eighteen months ago, been involved in approving this project. It involves certain multimodal transportation facility improvements to Van Buren, to Van Buren Street from Spring, Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. The project identified several interests in land that were necessary in order to construct these improvements. Most of the property owners, not most of the property owners, most of the interests are, are temporary, not permanent and are simply for construction. Property owners all along the project, and this is just these five represent just phase one of the project. All of the property owners along the project have been notified and included in the hearings and things that have been conducted over the last several years that this project has been developed. They have, most recently in the last fifteen to twenty to thirty days, received notifications regarding this particular action, regarding the fact that the town, exactly what the town would like in terms of interests of their properties. And town staff has been in communication with these, the owners and have even in some cases gotten very close, if not concluded, conversations with those owners. But they're not finalized. So we feel like at this point, we've reached an impasse. We also have a, a situation where we need to move these projects in the next few weeks in order to satisfy some funding deadlines with VDOT and other funds that are provided for these projects. So we are in a situation where we want to continue with negotiations, but we are having to file certificates of pay. As you know, our outside counsel is involved with the actual proceedings. Courtney Hartn will be here next week, but was unable to be here tonight. However, we do have the glamorous and.
Everest. You are passionate.
Just pretend at seven o'clock.
John Irish is here to tell us more about the Amber projects and exactly what we're asking regarding the particular interest.
Well, with that intro, I'm not sure if I can move up to it, but I will try. So what I'm gonna outline this evening is similar to what we have just recently gone through on the Bus Phase project. I'll give you a brief history, some of the steps that have taken place in the past, outline how we are, where we are today, and some of the other detail. I will go through this relatively quickly, but at the same time, if you see something that is particular interest, don't hesitate to stop me. To just reiterate some of the points that Lisa mentioned that are very critical to this whole project as well as all of these infrastructure, transportation projects, is that it's not only this Van Buren Complete Streets project in particular, but all of these projects that have outside the funding. The general atmosphere within agencies has been recently, within the last eighteen months, twenty-four months, to become very critical of expenditures being utilized for money that's currently allocated. Meaning the government is telling these agencies, we've given you this money, why aren't you spending? So this is an effort to make sure that dollars that are allocated to projects, not just Herndon, of course, but across the country and definitely in Virginia, we want to see those monies being spent and spent wisely. So that's where this push comes on the funding side. Our effort is to obviously meet those requirements that are necessary. Most of these requirements are established in these projects that were first generated back, in this case, nineteen, two thousand and eleven, I believe. So when those dates were set up, there was no clear picture, obviously, that that could be facing us. But today we are and we just have to do what we have to do. So that being said, Van Buren Complete Streets, as previously said, is a project between Spring Street and Herndon Parkway. It's currently two lanes, not entirely improved as far as sidewalks, curb and gutter, lighting, et cetera. So this does involve multimodal improvements. We are not going to be widening it. We will be putting in curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides of the street as well as either bike lanes in certain portions of this, as well as there is a portion that will be off road, bike track, cycle track. We are going to be including a additional, adding a traffic signal at the Alabama intersection. And both this end down here where it ties into Herndon Parkway, we have another project, which is the intersection improvements that will tie in directly and both are designed to match up with each other. Essentially, the scope is to improve multimodal, tie in with regional trails, obviously connect with the future needs with the Herndon Metro Rail, improve our pedestrian and ADA compliant facilities for crosswalks, the signal, et cetera. We're gonna be, hopefully, everything should take care of the drainage issues we've had at that intersection and other stormwater management along the entire length. We have specifically from the outset planned to use as much of the existing right of way as was at all possible to minimize the land acquisition that this specific set of ordinances for. And I think we've done a pretty darn good job when you look at it compared to the overall size and scope of the whole project. These improvements include eleven-foot wide travel lanes, on-road bike lanes, off-road cycle track, five-foot wide sidewalks, new signal, and existing left turn lanes will be maintained throughout. This is just a depiction of essentially, this is not specific, but it's a general idea of how this cross section will look. Sidewalks either side, there'll be some type of a buffer strip between that and the roadway. And then the on-road cycle tracks, uh, cycle lanes will be such as this. And this gets towards the Haley Smith Park areas when it then separates and becomes a separate cycle track on the outside of, further away side of the sidewalks. This is just a generic concept drawing at the earlier stages, but it is very closely depicting what will happen. This is Herndon Parkway down here, so we're starting on the south end, moving forward. You see basically what this is all involving. It's pretty much the same, continues on. This dotted line and this thing here in the corner of Haley Smith is where we'll have a, one of our stormwater facilities. Continuing up, this is the intersection with Alabama, where we'll have a full stop signalized intersection. Another stormwater facility will be located in this general location. Again, these are concepts, so the specific location may, in the final design, not be exactly where it's shown right in these drawings. And then continuing on with crosswalks here at the old Spring Street intersection and on up to tie into the Spring Street Van Buren four lane section right there. This is a drawing and graphic to explain and show exactly what the takes are that are involved in these ordinances. The real information to take from this is, in the scheme of the whole thing, the green is the temporary construction easements we're looking for. You will notice that as I go through a couple of slides here, that this majority of green is temporary in the sense that when we are done with construction, that easement disappears. There's no property rights that we have maintain, retained at all. Permanent easements, the blue, are primarily for the stormwater management. Permanent easements, the blue, are primarily for the stormwater management efforts I mentioned or utilities such as Dominion. This section right here, quite honestly, is the main piece that we have to provide to Dominion for relocation of power lines that are currently going to be in the way of doing the new improvements. The section here that's cross-hatched is also Dominion, but because it is over top of an existing right-of-way for Dominion, this does not require us to secure additional easements. And then the very, very hard to see, but occasionally you'll see a piece, this red is one of the places where we are going to do the actual fee simple taking. The reason this occurs on these two blocks is simply because the prior right-of-way, when any improvements were done in Van Buren, never was required of those property owners to provide the same right-of-way that exists along the entire length of Van Buren in these two cases. So to do the same improvements we're doing everywhere else, it's just a matter of that existing right-of-way does not give us that option to use right now. We need to secure that. Same on all these two corners, just a very small sliver. And to give you an idea of the overall property involved with the whole project, the amount of the take of right-of-way we're asking out of that is approximately three point two percent of two thousand square feet out of a total of sixty-four thousand plus square feet. Permanent easements about twenty-two plus percent, and the temporary easement is fifty-one plus percent of the overall. So as you can see, the temporary easement is the majority of what we are trying to acquire. This is just a generic timeline to give a little frame of reference, how long this project has been on the books and all the times and effort that the town and the staff have taken to engage the private property owners and the public in general. Starting back about the end of December of two thousand and eleven is when this first really started, went through a series of steps, including the bicycle master planning that the council wanted to incorporate with this. HAMSAM is a Fairfax County agency that funds projects directly related to the metro. TAP funding is another federal funding source that's involved with this project. We were doing property surveys, and at that time, we would have notified the property owners that we were going to be starting that part of the project as far back as March twenty, two thousand and fifteen. Then continuing forward, actually didn't start, even though the project and concept started in eleven, we didn't actually get authorization in a project agreement with VDOT starting until March of sixteen. So we have five years already invested in this project. This is about the timeframe when that magic date that is involved with the timing of getting these easements acquired is established back, that long ago, three-plus years ago. So currently, just to give you an update on the current schedule, as long as we can get the ordinances passed and the certificate takes filed, we'll be hoping to start our utility relocation this fall. So sometime, probably at least, the hope would be, depending on our wonderful utilities, sometime this fall or winter. And then start advertising for construction. And the reason this is why, why that date falls in fall of two thousand and nine, when we get the authorization after we get the certificates of take filed, that allows VDOT to authorize us to advertise construction. It will take us a minimum of two months from the time that authorization occurs until we actually will have documents that we can advertise on the street for the purposes of review by VDOT, by the federal agencies. So even though it seems like I say advertise, why aren't we starting sooner? Because it won't take that much time to get the, the approval of the documents that we're at some sort of authorization on. Starting construction hopefully in the spring of two thousand and twenty, and it's not going to be that long of a project, hopefully, with not a lot unforeseen, completing sometime about a year from now. And then lastly, just a couple of slides about the funding. General funds right now from the town, we're looking at about four hundred thousand out of four and a half million. TAP funds, as I mentioned, is a federal fund. The HB twenty-three thirteen regional share, this is a local fund that is available through the state. And then HAMSAM is funds that are available through the Fairfax County Department of Transportation. So the total project is four point five million, four point six. Of that land acquisition is approximately two hundred and forty thousand, and the construction about three, three, four million dollars. And that is the information.
All right.
And if I could just put a couple of points on there that we also discussed with the Bus Phase, I just want to reiterate for the public and just to be fully open, these are the type of activities VDOT does on our behalf regularly for VDOT administrative projects. This just happens to be a locally administered project, and so we're on the hook to do these sort of activities that VDOT would do. There may be questions about why it took so long, why are we in this time crunch when it came, comes time for funding. One of the things is, we can't go to land acquisition till we have engineering. And we have to wait for VDOT, we have to wait for Dominion to get their engineering in order for us to figure out what land we need to acquire. And both of those, those are two notoriously, well, let's just say, they, they're on their own schedules, and they don't really get energized until things get down to the eleven-hour crunch time. So we've been continuously on them for about a year to get this in, and it's just, they've just dragged out, dragged out, dragged out, until finally it popped, and we identified the land that needed to be required to make this all happen. Now, at that point, the other arm of VDOT that doesn't offer the engineering arm is now pressing us to get the money spent. So that's where we are where we are.
Questions or comments? I think, Bill, did you?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Signee?
I, this question, you presented it to us the other day, those temporary easements that, the ones in the gray green, you keep saying that once we have done the construction on those, they revert back. I mean, I don't think you can put it this way, but the ownership reverts back to the original owner. The question I have is, what if we need to maintain something? What are we building on them?
Well, the temporary is not actually getting the property. We are just accessing the ability to work on top of the property. So we need that room to do the physical work. So if we are building a sidewalk, we cannot confine our physical activities to build the sidewalk within the bounds of a five-foot sidewalk. We need room to grave, we need room to do things. So any maintenance will be within the right-of-way that we take care of long-term. We will restore anything that's disrupted or that's damaged in the temporary easements with, you know, siding, seeding, planting trees, whatever. But that is not anything we should have come back to and maintain infrastructure on those pro, those green areas.
And a question for you, I understand that there's a possibility that this will fall through, that the, that the funding will fall through because we may not meet the deadline? Well, depending on how it's considered.
The only way that we would not meet the deadline would be if council did not adopt these ordinances.
Okay, so my hypothetical is probably too hypothetical. Thanks.
We're optimistic.
Yeah. Well, I was just wondering if we'd get all this, if we'd take all this stuff, because we're doing a quick take, and then it falls through.
I think the chances are very slim if we go through with this and obligate our funds that are already obligated to us, that there would be a chance they're going to pull the funds away.
And if I can also chime in, the staff is in contact with VDOT. They know where our schedules are, they know what we're doing, they know what we're up against. We're in communication with them. So it's not like we're operating in a vacuum, and we're just going to throw this on their desk. They know what's going on, and they're giving us a, go ahead and proceed. We got you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Is that a thumbs up, or I have a question? Thumbs up, okay. All right, thank you so much.
You were after-vested, John.
That was, that was pretty after-vested for nine twenty. I'll take that.
Like a rescue.
Next up is a resolution to consider authorization of an application to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for our friends VDOT. Transportation alternative set-aside funding for federal fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, and the endorsement of the Central Eldon walkability improvements project. And Michael Wallach, our transportation planner, is already at the table. That was a very long title, so welcome.
Thank you. So yeah, so tonight, I'm going to show you all a brief presentation here. We're going to discuss the Central Eldon walkability improvements and the associated TA set-aside funding application. And John mentioned the TAP funding program. This TA set-aside is kind of a new name of that. So here's the aerial map here. The project area is for sidewalk improvements on the southern portion of Eldon Street, between Center Street to the east, and a couple parcels to the west of School Street, opposite of Main Drive. The project area is approximately three-tenths of a mile long. Here's a proximity map here. So to the north of the project area is the Sancho's School, to the south is the Herndon Middle School, to the west is our South Eldon Street corridor, and to the east is downtown So as mentioned, the project area is the south side of Eldon Street, between Center Street and School Street. And the proposed sidewalk improvements include a wider sidewalk going from four feet to five feet wide, a landscape verge between the curb and sidewalk, new curb ramps, new high-visibility crosswalks, and new accessible pedestrian signal that would be at the intersection, signalized intersection of Eldon and Gray Street. And the purpose of the project is to enhance safety and comfort for pedestrians, improve accessibility, obtain ADA compliance, and to provide a more walkable connection between the downtown and South Eldon Street and some of our neighboring neighborhoods and schools. So what is the TA set-aside program? It's a federal funding program administered by VDOT. Projects ultimately get approval by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and eligible projects must relate to alternative transportation infrastructure improvements. So it's funding a lot of sidewalk, shared use, path-type of improvements. The maximum request is two million dollars per fiscal year, and funding allocates up to eighty percent of construction costs, and a minimum twenty percent local match is required. The town is applying for FY twenty twenty-one and FY twenty twenty-two funds. Projects must begin construction within four years, so we'll be looking at a construction, construction beginning around twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So this is the existing condition on the south side of Eldon Street in the project area. The sidewalk measures less than five feet in this vicinity, and there are, there's thirteen utility pools within the sidewalk in this stretch of Eldon Street. Where on the north side, you, you've got one utility pool on the sidewalk. And the north side also has the brick paver treatment where the south side currently doesn't. And due to the two-million-dollar funding limitation with this program, we are just focusing on the south side of Eldon Street at this time. And part of that is because of several of these utility pools.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a stroller past the...
What's actually on the south side? Give me a landmark.
Uh, whoops.
Terrible, it's south, so I might have some more to smell.
It's, it's all single-family residential, but it's, but it's still that kind of connection. Herndon Middle School is right over there, and it's, it connects...
Oh, got it, okay. So it's on the other side of Herndon Middle School or the same side?
It's on Eldon Street.
It's on Eldon Street, yes. It's on Eldon Street.
So it's on, on which side?
Middle School side.
Okay.
On my side.
Okay, yes.
That's right.
That was the main house.
I was like, I recognize those steps. Shockingly, there wasn't a Fairfax Times newspaper on.
So we'll just go through the project plan view. This is the eastern segment, so the eastern terminus of the project would be Eldon and Center Street. And then this, this view here also includes the signalized intersection of Eldon and Gray Street. So we'll go further west here. This is the middle segment, so this would be the area around Eldon Street and Spruce Street and Peachtree Street. And then finally here would be the western terminus of the project. And the project would terminate west of School Street and across from Main Drive. And this is sort of where the sidewalk transition is being up against the street to, you know, where you, if you go further down, and then currently you've got the landscape meeting buffer in between sidewalk and street. So that's essentially where the project would end. So I'll go through the typical street section here. The existing right-of-way measures fifty feet wide. The typical section, when all said and done, would include the existing four-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side of Eldon Street, along with the two-point-five-foot-wide curb and gutter. The two travel lanes would be reduced from twelve feet to eleven feet wide. And then the median, which is also the turn lane up at, up at Gray Street, would go from fourteen feet wide to eleven feet wide. So you'd have basically eleven, eleven, and eleven there. And then on the south side would be the two-point-five-foot-wide curb and gutter. We would have enough room for a two-foot-wide grass strip, and then the five-foot sidewalk on the south side of Eldon Street. We'd give, we'd give it that, the program could fund the clay pavers on the south side, and then a, up to a one-foot-wide grass strip between the sidewalk and the south portion of the right-of-way. And we cannot, through this program, we can't relocate the utility pools due to the funding limitations. But the intent here is that the sidewalk could leave around the utility pools, and there would be enough room there.
So does that mean all those retaining laws on some of those properties, which obviously one of them was mine? What's happening with that? I mean, like, that seems like a big thing.
Yeah, the, the entire project would stay within the existing right-of-way.
Okay. That's gonna be awesome.
Sure.
So the median turn lane, has anyone ever looked at possibly making that directional during rush hour one way or another in the afternoon?
I, we haven't considered it at this time.
Shouldn't we? If you stand there, we all walk in like all of a sudden, where it really backs up and gets ugly is getting out of town, right? And then you get the two lanes when you get to Sterling. I may be way off on this, but it would make sense to kind of flush that out two ways going that way in the afternoon, if it's possible.
That, that wouldn't be funded under this program. This program is mostly sidewalk improvements, what, what VDOT terms as alternative.
Well, I just saw that median, it's like, it's there.
Yeah.
It's never used.
Right, right.
Rarely used.
Yeah, yeah.
People fly down, I'd be surprised.
Crumple streets.
All right, just two, two slides left here. So this is the typical project design, and kind of shows what, what, what the project would look like. Again, the project would be adding ADA-compliant curb ramps, curb ramps, high-visibility marked crosswalks. Like I said, the project will stay within the existing right-of-way. And then this is just sort of an overhead view, it gives you a different plan view perspective here. So if you guys have any other questions, um...
So the, sorry, on the, the sidewalk that has been curved around the poles, that is also going to be five feet, so any strollers or wheelchair can easily pass right in.
Yeah, yeah, the, the intent of this project is for the sidewalk, where it is, like today it's four feet wide, but the intent is for this to go to a five-foot-wide ADA-compliant sidewalk, because that's five feet from there momentarily. And then the intent here also is that we've got enough landscape buffering, really on both sides for the sidewalk, to be able to curve around consistently to the pools.
So the space we got is reducing one foot on both travel lanes and three feet from the center, so three, four, five, that's the five feet here.
That's correct, yeah.
Other questions or...
The, the full application for this is due October first, so staff's working on that right now. And then if this gets approved at the public hearing next Tuesday, that will be submitted as part of the full application by David and Mike.
Thank you. All right. Next up is item number eleven. It's a resolution to consider an appeal of the HPRB decision number nineteen dash twenty-nine, which was made at the August twenty-first public hearing, was approved with conditions... which was made at the August 21st public hearing, was approved with conditions. This is at 631 Oak Street. The HPRV approval requires that the replacement material be standing seam metal panels instead of architectural asphalt shingles as originally requested in the application. And I will ask for disclosures by council on this item, and I will begin. For the record, I am an owner of real estate on Eldon Street, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly objectively and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. And I believe we have two others.
Yep, Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an owner of real estate on Herndon Station Square, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly objectively and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an owner of real estate on Fort Hainé Boulevard, which is in the Heritage District. I'm able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly objectively and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
And I believe that is all. Thank you very much. And I will recognize Lisa to outline the process for us.
And as the mayor has indicated, because this is an appeal, there is, you know, staff reported this evening and simply an explanation by me of the code section, town code section regarding the process for the appeal. The appeal is heard at your public hearing next week. At that time, the appellant or the appellant's agent can present their appeal. And for those of you that have been here, who've done a number of these, can state their, their grounds for the appeal and identify any materials or evidence from the record to support their appeal. Town staff is also given the opportunity to respond. It is a public hearing, so any members of the public that are present can speak. At the conclusion of the hearing, the town council may affirm, modify, reverse, or remand the case to the HPRV. The decision is based on the standards in section 78-60F. And a decision, whatever the decision of the council is, is reduced to writing and appealable to the circuit court if that's so desired. In the case of a remand, obviously goes, goes back to the HPRV. The process is outlined in section 78-60.3 of the town code. And that's about it.
Would you mind sending the council a link to that code section?
I will absolutely do that. I will provide my usual client materials for your consideration.
Okay, are there questions about the process? Because since it is an appeal, we will not discuss the particular case until next week at the public hearing, correct?
Correct, when both parties have the opportunity to present their case and their.
All right, any questions on process? Okay, the only question I have is if, if this were, does the council, with whatever decision they make, the, the several options that we have, we have to provide the reason why we are making that decision in our motion that is made?
Yes, and again, I'll, I can provide you more detail without, I can provide you more detail as we approach the closing hearing. But yes, there should be a reason. And specifically with regard to a remand, the code specifically provides more detail there. And in order to remand it, I'm rolling, I, I want to give you the exact language. In determining, a decision shall not be reversed or modified unless there is evidence in the record that the decision of the HPRV is not correct based on the review standards for a certificate of appropriateness. And this is a certificate of appropriateness. In determining whether or not to remand a case, the town council shall be guided by the following factors. Completeness of the record, appropriateness of further review on certain points or facts, any amendments to the application after this decision of the board. And the wording goes on to say, "Town Council recognizes that revisions to an application for the purpose of clarifying issues or addressing concerns raised during the public hearing are positive and will not necessarily result in a remand, except that significant and substantive revisions to the application may serve as a basis for a remand." We've had not, to my knowledge, had any revisions to this particular application.
I'm sure we'll have all kinds of questions next week.
Yes. You have me to answer any questions.
Any further questions on process? Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, our next two items are similar. So the first one is a resolution to approve a temporary license agreement to use a designated public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating for an event. And I will recognize Lisa again for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is the, we have approved one of these already this year. Just one, I think. The alleyway behind Jimmy's, or between Jimmy's and Robert's Carpet, belongs to the town, is town property. Therefore, the town council needs to grant a license for them to hire or use that property. They have provided all documentation that we require, including insurance, and have obtained or applied for and will obtain a temporary use permit from the zoning administrator who's here this evening. Any questions you would have?
Any questions on this one? Good things for mayor, it's, it is. And again, typically, or at least last year, there was one application that covered all events and they weren't able to get it together. That's why we keep having it. And so the next item is a resolution to approve a similar license agreement for the use of the town parking lot behind Med Breeze at 71 Station Street for a Saturday anniversary event for Mile 20. And once again, Lisa.
Thank you. This is a new application. We have never seen an application for a use of this particular, by this particular business for this particular parking lot. This parking lot that obviously is town property. It contains, let's see, how many spaces? Thirty-eight public shared parking spaces, which as you know, are part of the parking that serves the entire downtown area. The proposal would use, I'm going to say, two thirds, half to two thirds of the parking lot by blocking it off. It would have handicapped spaces available, still available. The individual business has provided us with insurance for the event and has also applied for and will receive approval for a temporary use permit to use the, to use the property if council grants that use. I am not aware of the status of the ABC application.
I'm not sure on the ABC application.
We don't know whether neighbors.
They have all their authorizations in place, noise permits in place.
All required town permits except for the license agreement.
Which is what we're talking about right there.
Okay. Yeah, Sydney, questions? Do their neighbors know about it?
Yeah, they were required to notify their neighbors. We haven't heard anything from the town of any, from any of the adjacent businesses.
The question I don't know is whether they notified everyone that has public shared parking interests in this. They definitely notified their neighbors. Mr. Stromberg is aware of that.
And it's for the whole day, all Saturday? I think it's like 10, noon to 10 or something like that. Cesar and Nancy.
How, I didn't see, how many people are they expecting?
It's around 150 to 200 is what they're expecting.
They're not charging commission though, are they?
So they have a permit to consume alcohol, beer in the parking lot?
That's the ABC license.
I just want to make sure.
They have, they have to have that.
Okay, so.
So I haven't seen that it's completed, but I, Phil did mention in passing that he was getting that. I can't imagine he hasn't.
Okay, but my only concern, it's right next to that very unique mural. And.
Don't mess up brownie and pumpkin.
Well, you got, you got a whole day of drinking, right? I mean, just, they have to have insurance then to cover that.
Correct.
Well, that's private property. It covers, it covers our property. The insurance that they're required to give us covers our property. I'm assuming whatever, whatever, whatever damage might occur to private property would be subject to their private insurance. What they have to provide us is, we are additional insurers for our property.
But they would, they would be damages.
I would say so.
The Herndon Festival years passed also. When the Herndon Festival was there, they had food trucks and a beer tent in the parking lot. So he was blocking it. No, it was, it was basic.
You mean this particular application?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna say that the Herndon Rotary had our car show and we had that whole parking lot. And I made sure when I was out there working that when the people were to ask, where do we go for lunch? I would say, gee, you can go right over there at Mile 20 and watch your car or go to the Dairy Queen to make sure I was sending them people. But we were out there from early in the morning until four or five in the afternoon after we got the vehicles gone. So I don't think two hours is gonna hurt anything.
This is from noon until 10 at night?
Right.
Ten, ten hours.
Oh, noon until midnight?
No, 10 at night.
10 at night, okay.
It's not when their noise were made.
But we, we were out there all the time. And it didn't kill the business in the downtown, so.
Again, although this is something very new, we, the way staff looked at it is, is part of the vision is we're vibrant downtown. And does it always need to be a governmental activity that creates vibrancy? We get sent businesses to start creating some vibrancy too. So we thought this was an opportunity to test, test one of those things and see how it goes.
Yeah, because we had Lynn Street and the parking lot, so.
Yes.
And the town kept moving.
Other questions about this one? We have one general item, which is the State of the Town report for fiscal year 2019. Give that to us tonight or can you?
I have not. I'm gonna keep my powder dry until next week. You know, it's, it's the annual exercise that is mandated under our charter as one of my duties. And I will fill it next week. We will release a cold well report at that time. And the handy dandy little trifle brochure will be hitting mailboxes around that same time. You'll probably get the first crack at those before they hit the boxes. So those will be distributed next week. That's what, you know, tie charts.
I was looking at you, you know what I was thinking of?
I know, I'm reading, I'm reading.
Your 3D. I was showing actually one even last year to someone in my office. It's, it's really good. I'm excited about that. All right, there's one consent agenda item, which is to authorize an application for some money for VDOT. Staff is available to get questions on that item. All right. Awesome, we are at roundtable. Who wants to start us off?
I'll start.
Okay.
Not the report.
It's too hard.
Nothing to report, all right. Who's next? Sydney?
Legislative agenda. We got an email from Lisa and I have to admit, I can't remember what you told us we have to do. But in order to get the legislative agenda set up, what are we supposed to? Oh, I was just asking for ideas. I mean, I'm definitely, it is, you know, already framed. It does, I can see what you're looking at and I know what that is. I borrow heavily from the DML. I'm sorry. Light, the light. The whole light thing will solve a lot of the problems that people have been complaining, so I'm hoping that. That should be something then that you should bring to my attention as an item that you would like to see. That's what I was looking for from council. If there's anything in particular that you would like to see, even if you're highlighting something already in VMLs.
And so how would you like that, like an email?
Oh, sure, just an email.
Did that just do it?
Just an email. I, if you tell me which, or give me the piece of paper.
I will give you the piece of paper. I've circled a lot of different things. Preservation of right of way is one of my favorites.
And I believe this is under position statements. So typically, this would be something you want to join in this as a position statement. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You want me to, everything you've highlighted to you?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not too far related.
Thank you. Could I ask for staff to do me a favor if anybody's familiar with this? Oh, okay, I'll put it out there. Go for it, Sydney. I would like to consider possibly two things. I was watching the planning commission, not the planning commission, the HPRV meeting, as you know. And two things struck me. One was, we had this young couple who has, I believe, bought a house on Grace Street. That is the one that had all this damage. And she came up to ask if they could demolish a garage, a shed, which is unusable at this point. But apparently it was built in 1920 on her property and somebody else's property. And it was intended to just stay there for a specific short period of time. And she got permission to, to demolish it. But in the meantime, she was told that she had to pay for and provide documentary.
Photographs.
Yeah, archival photographs and all that stuff. And given, and when I'm looking at the Heritage Preservation District, I'm seeing that what they're, what, we're asking for this for the public good. We're not asking it for her good. We're telling, or actually, we're telling her for the public good to provide this and to pay for it. And I would like us not to do that. I feel that if we're gonna document something for the good of the entire town, that we shouldn't put the burden on an individual who's just trying to get through her life. So I'm wondering if you agree with me that that's something the town should pay for or we should find funding for rather than put the burden for doing that on the individual homeowner.
It's currently in the, in the code, but I'm assuming you're asking a question of your colleagues.
I'm asking my colleagues. My question is, do we require that every time? I mean, I know we are, like with the stolen building, but that's our property and we're doing that. And if we, we have documented some things with Carol Cavan, but that's our property.
I'm gonna defer to staff that has been around.
I've never heard of this, but that doesn't mean this never happens.
If it's, if it's of the period of significance, that's standard preservation language. All the jurisdictions do it. Now, who does it? That's, that's up to the town. If the town wants to take on that cost, then, I mean, the town could offer that. There's nothing.
How much does someone pay us? But literally, we're talking about taking some pictures. I mean, given, I just think, given the ease of taking pictures and getting them developed, we're talking like five dollars?
It knows, it's archival quality.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
It's a fairly complicated series of processes.
What works out.
Shadows, media format in certain ways.
And I would argue that, that the town's.
Why did I say?
I told you, you could have left early.
I know, and I don't want.
It is a little bit more involved than you would probably expect for a 20's shed that's small.
Right.
But it is sort of standard practice and it's codified.
That we.
It's not just archival photographs, but it's measured drawings as well. Measure drawings, architectural drawings essentially. And it's done, it does to the standard it's supposed to be done by a professional. I mean, it's, it's a very, that process.
So is it in our code that this is supposed to happen?
Quick CRIP now.
It's part of, as Ms. Gilligan said, it's standard practice.
In the state.
In order to preserve, it's part of the preservation part of.
Right, but is it part of the preservation process that, that the homeowner has to pay for?
Well, that's what, again, what Ms. Gilligan said, as to who pays for it, that's not, that's up to the town.
That's the part that concerns me.
Right.
And the second thing that I'd like to bring up and not, it just needs to be studied. And I've spoken with Mr. Ashton about this and the mayor both. And I think also Cesar. And I've spoken with Mr. Ashton about this and the mayor, both, and I think also Cesar, is I would like us to consider possibly studying giving some sort of tax rebate on people who spend a lot of money on roofs and whatnot for the benefit of all. In other words, if somebody's going to have to spend $40,000 or $50,000 to replace a roof that would have normally cost $10,000 in the Historic Preservation District, it's being done for the good of everybody, not for that individual. You know, I think there, it's hard for us to help these people, although I know our hearts all go out when they come and tell us that it's way too expensive and they can't afford to do it. But I think a tax rebate, even a small tax rebate over several years would be a nice way of saying, we recognize that you're doing this not just for yourself, but for all of us.
There are those things that they need to apply for. And I believe CD has the, all the addresses for that.
Are you talking about grants?
They can get tax credits for...
Federal tax credits?
Yes.
And state.
So there are those things.
That's just state tax credits, not...
If you're income producing, you can get new qualified, but you're just...
So I guess the question is, if, can we even do that if we wanted to? Do we have the authority?
That would be a legal question.
We have to... What I heard the council member saying was, can we study that? I mean, I do not know.
I would like us to study that and I would like us to consider it because I think we should put our money where our mouth is as a town. People complain a lot about the cost of maintaining homes in the Historic Preservation District. I really want them to maintain those homes, but I feel terrible that the cost is so high and that there's not a lot we can do to help them with that.
If I can comment on that?
Go ahead.
I think that's why for me, it's been more important to have really a strategic vision. Not affordable housing, not workforce housing, but holistically, how do we view housing five, 10, 20 years from now? There's a lot of people that I've spoken to that are afraid of losing their home. A lot of them are in this sort of district. What happens if that leak happens that I don't know about? And oh my God, if I really caught it, you know, two months ago, then it would have been a couple hundred, but now it's far more. And when you're on a fixed income, that's really hard to solve. So I think as part of our strategic planning around this whole affordable housing should be sort of this concept of, you know, staying in your home and housing. What can we do as a town to lighten the load? You know, the code or, I don't know publicly how we would even fund something like that if it's not already funded. But lightening the load and the burden through our own code is probably something we should consider. Because it's not just the people, the affordable or workforce, it's people that are already in their home. How do we ensure that they can stay in their home?
Is this something that we could add to? Are we getting the guidelines? They're coming to us in the near term. And I think that our goal as a council has been to make this more user-friendly and is this something we could add into that discussion of, can we make it easier for them to know how to apply for these federal or state rebates?
Well, I mean, certainly, we can provide that information concerning the state tax rebates, but the guidelines, I finally received the schedule. I don't care for the schedule because they want to have the opportunity to come in with another draft immediately staff prior to having a more, I don't want to say final, but...
Flushed out.
Flushed out for prime time. And so they're saying the prime time one would be closer to December or some type of... We can include the type of policy you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about the tax credits.
Right, the type of policy that you're talking about. Some of that may fit into the guidelines, but some of that is really a separate. It may be totally separate if the policies may be, we're going to pick up the cost of some of that actually. That's not, no, I don't think that's... Well, yeah, I mean, in other words, if doing the archival documentation, that would be a direct cost for the town. That's not going to be in the guidelines per se. I mean, it might be one sentence that would have to be changed, but to say that, to take that language out. Now, the, I'm trying to think of what else might be in the guidelines. If you're offering a tax rebate for a significant amount of work, that's not really in the guidelines, but the guidelines is saying how the work should be done. It's not whether or not you get a tax rebate. So until you really flesh out exactly what it is that you want that policy to be, it's hard to say to what extent that's going to impact the guidelines. You know, once you get those guidelines, there may be things you would like to change or things you find, but...
I think that I was mentioning that because it's part of a total package of making this easier for people to use. Could that be part of that discussion? I like the idea a lot. I am worried about staff time with all of the major things that we have going on and I don't know how involved a study on this is.
We don't know. I'd love to give you a...
Well, I'm just thinking, like, affordable housing, I think, is going to be a huge thing. It already has taken a lot of staff time just to get us to tonight and I think that's something that's important that we're going to be moving forward. I just don't want to stretch everybody too thin. And we put that on our, like, on our list of, like, for a strategic vision, here's a thing that we need to consider.
Because I will say that we've had some people over Brownwood and Herndon Woods over the years that needed their roofs replaced. And there was one couple, they absolutely couldn't afford it. They were right there on Spring Street. Their church and all these people, they did a fundraiser, they went in there and took care of it. So we've had the community show up because these guys were on a very fixed income. This is probably the one you meant to...
I think we're talking about a bunch of different things.
I can check with Alexandria as well, because Alexandria has a Star District. See if they had anything that looked like one of those well, in terms of... Well, I've really, really, really enjoyed meeting with Lisa and Lisa over the past couple of weeks preparing for affordable housing.
Lisa, Lisa and Lisa.
Let's, I think we should convene one more time and just talk about these things that were thrown out. We'll try to kind of wrap our hands around what it would take levels of effort. Maybe next work session, throw it out there and talk.
And just to be clear, I'm not talking directly about affordable housing.
No, 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 I'm talking about these other items. These other housing items that...
How do we keep people already in their home there?
Right.
And not force them out due to some other thing? And I encourage everyone, if they haven't, there's a documentary that will frighten you. It's called San Francisco 2.0. And it basically, historically, chronologically, categorically, it shows you what happens when high-tech influences or monies come into an area and what happens to the neighborhood itself. If we're not on top of it, it will happen here.
So let me just get the two principles in a room. Let's kind of hash out this in a more global housing way. And we'll come back in maybe two weeks and we'll sit down and say, okay, it's going to take us out with this amount of time to study it. This is what we want to chase.
Thank you.
Sure, we could do that.
My children are like, do we have to go to bed?
Yes.
Yes, you have to go to bed. Who I kicked you up with, he's already gone. Say something.
I did step in.
Yeah.
Okay, just congratulations to our five officers that got promotions. The ceremonial, they were already promoted, but thank you, that was very nice. Your words were awesome. And the chamber meeting, Bill was there representing the town and we had the Tom Stock. Were there.
We were shoulder to shoulder answering questions, yes.
And that's what they brought up.
I couldn't get him there, we're heading there.
We go there. But we talked about parking and people were upset, are we going to charge for parking? So no, we're not charging for it.
I got to use my tag while we're not resting one more time.
We have never ever mentioned charging for parking.
Well, and that's what I said, I said, excuse me, we already pay for parking. The businesses have a public shared parking. Unless you're Zepperellis, you're paying into it, so we're not going to charge again.
So it should be hashtag Hip Herndon, hashtag, nobody pays for parking.
I wanted to do a whole campaign with parking on, so I thought it was too neat. But I still like it. Has everybody, Mr. Town Manager?
A couple of things. Number one is we see a lot of heavy downtown work, feeling like crazy today. We are closing roads so we can quickly turn them and pave them or as quickly as possible to get them back online. So we're turning and burning everything we, we should be turning and burning what we milled today. Tomorrow should be the paving or next day.
When it's closed.
Close, because one of the times, Lynn Street's going to take it next week because of the active usage of the Lynn Street. So we have court took upon Wednesday, we have one for her Thursday. We have scheduling problems with the contractor on Friday, so it's going to push through the weekend, but keep that in mind.
He doesn't, there's no court tomorrow.
Oh, there's no court tomorrow?
No, mine, so we're going to pay.
You're going to pave?
We're going to pay Lynn.
Oh, we're paving Lynn, that's new. See, you lied to me earlier.
They can ask for a court.
There's a court to pay. Second thing, I don't know if you all have realized, Asland is working over there.
I saw them, yeah.
Okay, so the building permit, we were holding them to coming up to grade and then I looked over and saw a four-foot wall going up. So I did talk to our staff upstairs. Their current building permit will allow them to restore what came down. So they're allowed to go up to where they, where it all started. And then at the pause, they have to pull the building permits to finish the building. So they will be pausing at some point. We're watching them like hawks. We're going to watch them like hawks. And so that's happening. And then lastly, I just want to just comment, I was invited and graciously accepted to talk to the Youth Advisory Council on Thursday. Lucy Brown sent me an email, Clear Blue Sky, just thanking me for coming in. I thought that was like the coolest thing in the world, not just because Lucy, Marry Charlie Brown, but because a young lady like that that just reached out and did a very, you know, mature, appropriate thing.
These kids are something.
She's doing amazing projects. She's actually doing music therapy for her Girl Scout, you know, Gold Starter Award music therapy over at the Herndon, you know, the Harbor House. We've talked about it, yeah, so.
She is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was awesome, so.
Yeah, she's a good people, pretty good for her, hung up on my, we have...
That reassures me, after looking at my teenagers, reassures me, actually, the future of America, so.
I would encourage all of you to make time to go to at least one Youth Advisory Council meeting. Those are the best meetings, no offense, that I go to every month when I come here.
It was last Thursday.
All right.
It is the night and two days.
Seeing no other business, we move to a drive.
Unless you want to...
I've talked way enough, so. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? And stand in turn. Oh, there's one, there's one objection by Ms. Friedberg.
Duly noted.